two thousand and twenty-three. We are hereby called to order. It looks at six oh-two P M. We turn the floor to Councilman Parker to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I would like to introduce Brother Chris, Pastor Chris Johnson of the All Saints Episcopal Church. He's gonna do our invocation this evening.
As a foretaste of the prayer, I'm going to begin with Howard Thurman's Litany of Thanksgiving, and that will lead into our prayers. So let us pray. In your presence, O God, we make our sacrament of Thanksgiving. We begin with the simple things of our days: fresh air to breathe, cool water to drink, the taste of food, the protection of houses and clothes, the comforts of home. For all these, we make an act of Thanksgiving this day. We bring to mind all the warmth of humankind that we have known: our mother's arms, the strength of our fathers, the playmates of our childhood, the wonderful stories brought to us from the lives of many who talked of days gone by when fairies and giants and diverse kinds of magic held sway; the tears we have shed, the tears we have seen; the excitement of laughter and the twinkle in the eye with its reminder that life is good. For all these, we make an act of Thanksgiving today. For these and all our blessings, we are ever grateful to you, O God. We pray that you send down upon those who hold office in this city of Pontiac the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice needed to preserve these blessings, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We pray for your wisdom and grace as conversations continue in how a recreation center can best serve the needs and dignity of the people of this city. We pray for your Spirit of wisdom and grace as conversations continue, as our community leaders discern healthy and safe ways for our citizens to grow, market, sell, and use marijuana as a recreational aid without sacrificing their sober judgment as they do so. We pray especially for those who have been killed in this past week through terrible acts of violence and for the over thirty-nine mass shootings that have happened in this country. We pray also for those who seek a warm place to call home, a place where personal dignity and self-respect may prevail, a place where our community leaders can discern sound business opportunity without sacrificing human compassion and responsibility. All this we ask through grace, mercy, and the power of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's not true. Let's remain standing for a moment of silence. Reverend Dr. Christopher Johnson invoked those victims of gun violence, the mass shootings that have happened in recent days, but also that have happened dozens of times throughout our community already, throughout our country already this calendar year. Please join us as we remember those that we've lost in our neighborhoods, as well as those throughout the country that have been lost to gun violence. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. All members are present and voting. Could I please have a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion is before us. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Councilman Parker.
Is this a point where I could ask something be tabled?
This would be a time, or that time, when it comes to the agenda as well. This would be a good time to, like, remove it altogether from the agenda. What item do you have in mind?
Number three. I would ask that it be removed until such time as this council has had opportunity to review the information that we was just given earlier today, in addition to the fact that the council asked, had a request of the planning commission which has not met yet.
So, we could remove it entirely, or we could table it when we get to that point on the agenda. Both are options. What's the pleasure of this council?
Neither.
Well, I said it be tabled.
Okay, so there's a motion from Councilman Parker to remove item number three from this evening's agenda. I'm thinking about it out loud. Because we voted last week to table it to this week, I think we at least have to table it from this week, if that makes sense. So we might need to wait until we get to that part of the agenda. Sorry to not...
That's okay.
...criticize her with me immediately.
No, you're correct.
Okay. But any other... Thank you for raising that. Now, broadly speaking, many times that this would be the right time to help determine what should be on the agenda. Are there any other discussions, clarifications, or changes sought, any amendments coming forward? Hearing non-speakers, this is exhausted. Roll call and adoption of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman. James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Council Pro-Tan Carrington. Roll call on approval of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved, and I'll just ask for a housekeeping item from Mr. Brown with the Cape Department. I just wanna know, since the microphone isn't lighting up, just wanna make sure what I'm saying is right. All right. Special presentation. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, do we have this evening's presentation? Thank you, President McGinnis. We do. We have our Community Development Director, Rachel.
Good evening. I am here to introduce you this evening to Larry Domski. Larry has come on board as our new building official in the Building Safety Division. Larry has worked in the building safety municipal environment for over twenty-five years, and before that, he was a contractor for fifteen years. Larry's here to answer any questions that you might have and just kinda give you a little information on himself. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Larry Domski. I'm the building official for Pontiac now. I'm glad to be here, and I look forward to helping Pontiac move in a positive direction.
Thank you. And can you share a little bit about your professional background for the community's benefit?
I've been a building inspector for over twenty-five years, a plan reviewer, and a building official for the last fifteen years. I was a contractor for fifteen years prior to becoming a building official, and that's how I became a building official. Through the city I worked for, being a good contractor, they asked me to be their building inspector, and that's when I took the job in nineteen ninety-seven. And I've been a building inspector since, and a plan reviewer, and a building official.
Thank you. Questions or discussion from council members? Welcome very much in this role to the city of Pontiac, and thank you for your service to Pontiac's neighborhoods, residents, and taxpayers.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well. All right. We are now at a public hearing at the January... Can't remember. It may have been the January tenth City Council meeting, but some time ago, when we voted as a city council to authorize the mayor to execute a sales, a purchase agreement for the property at one ninety-one North Glenwood. We also voted to schedule a public hearing, so that way the community could be aware of those developments and offer your feedback if you had any. For a little bit of historical context, as you may be full aware, the city of Pontiac is very committed to having a youth recreation center, comprehensive, cutting-edge, very quality for our Pontiac youth twenty-one and under, and we wanna make sure we have an ideal site for that. I would say it was October, and feel free, if anyone wants to correct me, to make sure I've got my timeline right, but in October, this city council voted to authorize a consideration for this site, which formerly was the McCarrill School, and we also were actively considering the Wisner School, Wisner Stadium, and track as well. So that was publicly available, and so that might have already been well aware that those are our two final locations that seemed the most viable, that were in a geographically central part of the city. So negotiations continued with the Pontiac School District for approximately four months. Informal conversations happened before that with the school district leadership, but actively pursuing consideration for at least the last four months, while we also had this option to purchase on an additional site consideration, the former McCarrill School. So with Wisner and McCarrill as those primary contenders in contention, two weeks ago, if I have my dates right, the city council in a public meeting voted to authorize the mayor to pursue the purchase and execute that purchase agreement. It is contingent on a due diligence period, which is actively underway, as well as environmental studies, to make sure that the site at one ninety-one North Glenwood is legit for us taxpayers and the purpose that we need. So that's the current part of the process we're at. We're looking forward to, as the administration and the council and the community come together about what possibilities exist for that, we want your feedback to help shape that. So I just wanna make sure that everyone was aware of those moving parts and where we stood in the process. The school district of the city of Pontiac, they own the land for that alternative option, alternative site, which is the Wisner School, the track, the stadium, and other vacant land there as well. An initial offer was made for them to consider for purchase, and the hope was that there would be either an acceptance or a counter, but instead, they voted to reject. So that was the nature of the message delivered formally on behalf of the school district, so we're proceeding accordingly because youth recreation needs still need to be met, and we still need to move forward so that way we can make the most of available time. So before I open the public hearing, I wanna give the mayor and administration opportunity to elaborate any further on the information that I offered up, so that way, if you are offering up your feedback in the public hearing, you at least have that initial sense. Mayor or Deputy Mayor, anything you'd like to offer?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. One is that going back some time now, when we took office, we had had a full three and a half years go by since the passage of the Youth Recreation Village, without the city purchasing a youth recreation facility or a community center for the purpose of using for youth recreation. The city had been leasing a facility down on Gulf Drive for twenty-six thousand dollars per month. That's a lease that we immediately ended, both because of the exorbitant lease price, but also because it was really in the far southwest corner of the city. It was not centrally located. And at that time, we commenced a comprehensive review of properties throughout the city for possible locations for the city to buy and utilize for youth recreation. In the meantime, of course, we've been operating robust youth recreation enrichment programming at a number of sites throughout the city. That began in earnest last spring and summer, and has continued since then. We narrowed down the list of reviewed properties to two properties, really three possible properties that we brought before council, but of those three properties, there was a clear preference for two of those three properties. One was the Wisner School site, and the other was the old McCarrill School site up off of Mount Comm, next to Oakland Park, and in very close proximity to Aaron Perry Park. We ultimately decided to pursue purchase of the Wisner property, and we talked with the school district superintendent, the school board president, and the school board facilities committee over a period of months, beginning last August and continuing as recently as early this month, early January. We ultimately offered to buy the Wisner site for one and a half million dollars. Unfortunately, the school board declined our offer. We suggested that they might wanna offer a counter offer, but they have not done so, and by all appearances, they're simply opposed to selling that location under any circumstances. We can't lease the property from them, as they've suggested, in part because if we don't own the property, we will not qualify for a number of potential grants that are out there that we're hoping to obtain in order to help improve whatever site we choose for a youth recreation center. So we have changed course and gone with the other option, and that's the McCarrill School site. And there are some real pluses to the McCarrill School site. It's not as large as the Wisner site, but it's still approximately seven acres, and importantly, it's immediately adjacent to very large parks. So we can certainly use the McCarrill site to construct the community center itself and rely on Oakland Park and Aaron Perry Park and improvements to those parks to facilitate adjacent outdoor recreation. In fact, the new Pontiac Skate Park will be built in Oakland Park in very close proximity to the youth recreation center. So that's a big plus. The other big plus to the McCarrill site is that it is right in the dead center of the city. If you look at a map of Pontiac and you look from north to south and east to west, it is exactly, or just about exactly, in the middle, both east to west and north to south. So while we were disappointed in the school board's declining of our purchase offer, there are a lot of big pluses to the McCarrill School site, and we're really excited about the prospect of moving ahead with it.
Thank you. And the public hearing is your opportunity to weigh in. You are required with a public hearing to state your name and address. That's just the nature of a public hearing, so you can take the microphone and offer that feedback, and so share with us your feedback as we shape this matter. Thank you very much, madam, for activating the microphone. So I will, at six twenty P M., open this public hearing. If there's any requests to address, just come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have the floor.
Quincy Stewart, one ninety-seven Crestwood, Pontiac, Michigan. I, too, was disappointed we couldn't get the Wisner site, and last time I heard the mayor talk about McCarrill, McCarrill's in pretty bad shape. It sucks. It's in bad shape over there. So I'm not so happy about the McCarrill site, and my biggest concern is the fact that the majority of African-American children here can't swim, and I got a real issue with that. I mean, there's no place to swim here for kids to learn to swim. When I was coming up, Hayes Jones had a place where we could swim. Is there gonna be any thought about building a pool there, or, you know, building out there? Because just playing basketball or all the other things, that's great, but McCarrill would need a place like a pool put in there. But my understanding is that the place is in pretty bad shape. So are these grants gonna really take care of... I mean, has anybody checked out the infrastructure of the building? Is there rock there? Is, I mean, pipes? Is it just galvanized steel? Or is it gonna be... There's all kind of things that are gonna interrupt water flow, and I'm sure Chuck's gonna come by behind me, because he knows about that kind of stuff, and maybe talk about some of those things that would be very, very costly. Is the cost to repair the place and get it up to snuff gonna really pay out in terms of maybe looking for someplace else? I personally was a big fan of Hayes Jones. Has a pool already there. Got lots of land there you can build out, but that's my opinion. But either way it goes, I will support you.
Thank you very much. Chuck Johnson here. You know...
And your address, if you could.
Twenty-one North Pat Up, Road Pontiac. The McCarrill site is probably a good site because of all the amenities that the mayor just named, but why do we have to continue as a city like we are? Continue buying and using used whatever. We can build a new building on that site, if that's a presentable site. We can get the money to build a new site. We don't have to take this building and nurse it back to good health, add this and add that. It's not gonna work, a mayor, and it's not gonna work, council. Let's, if we want that site, let's tear that building down. It depends upon what the school board wants, because they wanna get rid of it. I know what they wanna do. They don't want that blight on their hands. So let's tear it down. Build a new facility, put the amenities that we want on that site, the seven acres, like the mayor indicated. Let's not keep on spending our hard-earned taxpayer dollars on used stuff, a rundown building. We don't know what that building is gonna cost just to revamp it, and it's my understanding there's millions of dollars laying somewhere in a coffer that we had from the mayor, Mayor Waterman's term. There's money someplace that we probably could add to this and get it going, but that's not... Let's not use that building. If we want the site, tear the building down. Thank you.
Chris Northcross, one-six-eight Astrowood, Pontiac, Michigan. Number one, I, too, have to express my disappointment that the school district and the city could not work closer together and be able to negotiate the purchase of Wisner by the city. I also, with my disappointment, have to say I have some fear that the city will... Excuse me, that the school district in the very near future may be left as the sole owner and sole user of that building with no plan to use it. And we have seen in the past how well the school district has taken care of surplus buildings, so we may have an issue there in the coming future. To the city council, I would say yes, go ahead, go full speed ahead, and I, too, would say let's have the finest facility that we can get, that we can afford, one that serves our needs. Our young folks have gone too long without good facilities, and the measure of a city, I think, is how well it can develop its young people. That's the real measure. Everything else kinda leads to that, and if we can get young people out the door with certainty, with a great degree of certainty, then we become a great city. If we cannot, we're also has run. And I would say to others, if we can, there's gonna be a period, I understand, where the city goes through and really looks at buying McCarrill, perhaps... Perhaps we can also encourage the school district to take another look. That's not on the city council, but that could be on all of us as voters to maybe take the school district, to get them to take another look at their decision and rethink that in the meantime. Thank you.
Carlton Jones, 1323 Oakland Drive. I've been around here long enough to know that we've had a similar type of situation with city officials and schools district officials. And we got to kind of get to a point where we get beyond this. We talking about a youth recreation center. That should be the first thing in the school board's mind. So who owns it could be either one, but we think both of them should be about the interests of the people and the youth in our city. If that property could be better used for our youth in our city, whether it's school, district, only or not, we should see about trying to engage them to use it that way. And I think that site at McCarrill could be a site, and I agree with Chuck, we need to talk about building something brand new on that site. Don't be trying to revamp it. Let's get something brand new. And we can have both. We had four centers around here for a long time, so why we got to start thinking we only need one? I think we need to have the school district talk about getting engaged, and I know I'm talking to a different body, but we got to get beyond this, them not working hand in hand with the city. We got to get beyond that, because we elect every one of the elected officials, and it's all about the city of Pontiac at the end of the day. So I think if we can start not letting an elected body of people who we all elect make different determinations about what's best for us here at the city collectively, whether it's the city of Pontiac council or the school board. You talking about a youth center, it seem like the school district should be in the forefront of how we can use those facilities to best serve the youth here in Pontiac. So I'm going to keep a close eye on this, but I do believe we can make best use of that McCarrill Site with something brand new. I mean, it's time for us to get some state-of-the-art for our youth here and build accordingly to some needs that we don't have. Like Quincy was saying, we don't have a place for our young people to learn to swim. So we have to be thoughtful about whatever we do with the youth centers to make sure we accommodating the needs of here in Pontiac youth. I'm going to keep a close eye, and I'm going to revisit people at the school district to see why are they not coming back in the best interest of the youth here in Pontiac? Because I don't see a big difference. You know, I spent some time around here working with the city, and I'll tell you what Brother Northcross just said. One of the things they told us when I was working as a planning commissioner, they say anytime a city is not taking care of their youth or their seniors, it's going to be a sick city. And if you know what they mean by a sick city, it mean it'd be dying soon. So we got to really pay attention to our seniors and our youth. Thank you.
Norman Elam, 45258 Woodward Avenue, Pontiac. My concern is, when are we as the citizens of Pontiac? And when are we going to really value our youth? When we going to do that? Put them in another old raggedy building that we going to rehab? I rehab homes, houses. And I'm finding out now that it's cheaper, okay, to tear the thing down and build up, rebuild the whole thing. Give us something new. Last I checked, my taxes didn't go down. They went up. And what we do with it, I don't know. But let us stop rehabbing this, let us value our youth. I have kids, grandkids coming up, and I don't want them in a building that we don't know exactly what might happen. We say we redone it, but then what happens is we spend more refixing the refix. So consider that probably a nice location. I accept that. But don't put our kids in another rehab or something that is not going to benefit them in the long term. That's my thought.
I'm Dr. Deirdre Waterman, 312 Ottawa Drive, Pontiac, Michigan. That's my home. The youth center is something that's near and dear to my heart. You know, I was part of the contingent that convinced voters to pass the millage in 2018 to get a new center in the city of Pontiac. And that's what people were expecting to get when they voted for that millage, and they've been paying out of their pockets, the full millage, except for one year, every year since. So the fact that we don't have a youth center or even a plan for one right now is devastating for our youth. We're right back to square one where we were four years ago. You know, like you, Wisner was my first choice too, because the high-tech, because at that time, the Carter Lee contracting had offered to help us build a gymnasium, because that was what it was lacking. So I don't know what the offer is now, but since the school district has turned you down seven to zero on that one, and you've gone to McCarrill School, but has anybody done due diligence to see how much it would cost to rehab that school or to tear it down or to build? Generally, before you offer to buy something, you have some idea of what the efficacy and what the cost is for that. Yes, Chuck, the ninth council before, when I was mayor, put away $3 million for a youth center. They were going to purchase Golf Drive, but they decided not to purchase it, so that's why we were continuing to rent it. Plus, I think there's other money in the ARP money. So there is money there that's still set aside for the youth center. But the tragedy of this is that we worked very hard to get a youth center open, and because the council didn't like Wisner, we went instead to Golf Drive because it had a huge gymnasium. It's 50,000 square feet, 12 acres of land, right in the whole Clinton Trail corridor, across from the lake, and just for a valuable property. You know, it has increased in value for that. So the bad thing is that it was closed for no reason that I could see. You know, $26,000, including, everything was included, was a reasonable price to pay for that, for 50,000 square feet of space. The kids loved it. We had 250 children in the school, in the youth center, almost every day, you know, before COVID. It was also, we had a sheriff mini-station, so it was also a place where we could kind of help with youth gang violence and the things that, problems that we learned from school. We actually disarmed one youth who had a, somebody in school had carried the gun to school with them all day. So these were the kinds of things, and the kids loved to come and social networking. So it's not the same, they're having to wander from spot to spot like nomads right now. They loved that site. And so I feel very personally aggrieved that they have no central place to call home and that it was closed without a plan. So I don't know how long it's going to take to get McCarrill School up and running or Wisner or whatever. But harm is done to our children. We're still paying the taxes for that, the millage for that, and that's what people really want, to have a youth center again for their children.
Good evening, council and mayor. First, I want to commend you guys-
If you could state your name and address.
Oh, Kermit Williams, 61 North Sanford Street in Pontiac, Michigan, in the greatest part of Pontiac, the east side. So I just want to commend the mayor and the council for actually coming to making some decisions and actually purchasing land. I just want to clarify a couple of things really quickly, because we have a lot of people who have invested in our youth and really got this process to get started. Unfortunately, our former mayor was not the champion for the children that she proclaims to be. They didn't want the youth millage to get on the ballot and get it there. But then she came around after the people had overwhelming support. So it was a grassroots effort done by people like Tamika Ramsey and others in the community that all came together. Even Mr. Johnson gave money to make sure that events happened to have that happen. The point that I wanted to make is, even though Wisner was the mayor's first choice, and that was very true, it was a lease option at the time. And so I'm so glad that you are considering actually purchasing a piece of land in order to start. I know that no decision is going to be a perfect decision, but I think the overwhelming sentiment of the residents who have waited so long for something for the youth is for it to be a new facility. I don't know what that cost is going to be, but I feel like you can leverage not only the money that the previous council, the $3.2 million that we didn't use, but some other ARPA funds and some others to really get together. For the first time, Pontiac, as a democratic city, has all leadership that is in Democratic there. The governor's going to do her state of the state address tomorrow, and I think this will be a prime opportunity to leverage the relationships that the mayor has, that the council president has, and others to make Pontiac a real jewel. So I know, and I'm praying for y'all that y'all will make a good decision. I wasn't going to speak on it, but I couldn't allow mistruths to go to the audience and then people put undue pressure on this new council and new administration based on things that happened in the past that are not told correctly. So I just want to say that. I'm going to be praying for you, and we look to see what the plan would be. One of my questions is, do we know how much a true rehab and demolition would cost on the building? And that's something that may be for the next public hearing they would hear. So I just want to commend y'all for actually making a decision and moving forward, at least locating a site. But I think new would be the primary option, but if it's not cost-effective, please let the people know why. Thank you.
Good evening. Gloria Miller, 431 Boyd Street, City of Pontiac. I too, being on the 10th council. You know, I was just speaking of this money last week, about the money for the recreation. The last council left 3.2, I'm hearing the president, former president, state for the city council. And we fought long and hard about that. We did surveys on everything that you guys did do, so you didn't really kind of have to do all this over again, because we went through all of it. And one of the biggest reasons I wasn't supporting Wisner, because Wisner doesn't have the capacity to have the kids, the way it's made, the street is fast, kids is coming across. It was dangerous to me. And so, and it's a turnaround. So it's just not a good spot. And when I went in Wisner, I took a look around, the room was too small, it wouldn't have worked for the kids. We have too many kids in youth. But let me tell you something I'm proud of. I went to a game last week. My granddaughter plays in basketball all over, whatever you call it, where you go all over and travel. She's on the travel team. And they go everywhere. And everywhere that I go, all parts of Michigan with her, they got top of the art building that kid playing in. City of Pontiac is the only place I see that don't have one. But I went to United Shores when they played last week. I looked at United Shores, I said, why can't we have this? It looks beautiful. It's nice. It's neat. Stop second-grading us. Stop doing that. There are people in this city I grew up with got more respect, keep their property. We all don't think alike. Believe it or not, we want the best for our kids. We want the best for our kids. Now, if you're going to take that 3.2, we was responsible for that. Call us what you want with the last council, but we were responsible for that money, and we held on to it. And we was hoping and praying that the next council come in and do the right thing for the city, because a lot of politics is playing. I'm not going to blame, I'm not going to call a blame game, because anybody watched our meeting know what was going on. We got to stop playing politics with this money, because what I'm going to say to all the citizens out here, that is the millage money, and the millage is coming due soon. And guess what? You can vote not to bring it back. Because I'm a truthful believer. You don't do what you said with my money at first, I'm not going to give you anymore. And we still don't have a building built. McCarrill is okay. I have no problem with you guys picking McCarrill or Wisner, because Wisner, I love Wisner. Wisner's a great place to go out there and walk, but it's not a good spot for the kids. I want what United Shores got down on South Boulevard. That's what I want. I want that same kind of building for our kids where they can go play sports here, they can play there, we can have a swimming facility in. 3.2. I met with some investors when I was on council. A lot of people want to come here and help us. We got 3.2, get four or five to match it. And like the president say, good idea. We got the governor now, we got a Democratic House, let's work with them to put the right thing. We don't want McCarrill. McCarrill is not what we want. It's okay. It was good back in the day. I want my grandkids. I want the cities of kids that live around me have the best. But that's where, everywhere I go, City of Pontiac is the only one that doesn't have a community center for the best for their kids. Do not take that money and put it into trash, and then you're ending up getting trash out of it. Do a survey, do a, see what the land is worth and see what it's going to cost. Because that 3.2, like I stated before, that's a council, former council person. There were many people out there wanting to talk with us and help build up on that 3.6, make it seven to eight to build that building. Thank you.
Larry Jasper, Omega Investments, 265 Marlboro, Bloomfield Hills, just south of Pontiac, six blocks. Anyways, as far as the school's concerned, I think the guys are right. You probably have a six-month due diligence period, and so I'd look at redeveloping that entire property. You just hired yourself a new builder, it has construction costs, he'll tell you those items, you should be able to put that together and make a decision based on that. But more importantly, the ARP, the Biden Fonzer ARPA will be used for new infrastructure. So theoretically, you could put green energy sources in there for lighting, you could use different applications to bring in the water sources, purification, all that could be done, and you have those sources. And if you have $3.2 million sitting in an escrow, why not use that for an architect? Bring them in, lay it out, show the community what you want to do, tie it into the other development going in the city in the master plan. You're supposedly wanting to do a new master plan, let's put this all together as one package so that we can actually change the city and make it right for the kids. Trying to refit that building is going to cost you 10 times more than if you just bulldoze it and start over. And even the South Boulevard site, that's fairly inexpensive considering the cost to what you would do for a new site. And if you want to put a pool in there, I mean, that's easy enough to do. You got seven acres, it's in the center of town. Bring in it with a transit system. I told you guys I was approved with MDOT, with the MegLab Transit, why not tie that in downtown? Why not tie that into community and extra revenue streams coming in? You know, you can't just tax the people, you need to generate revenue streams for the city. So when you build it, look at those sites, take your time, go through it, and then make a solid decision. Thank you.
I'm Rosalyn Northcross, 168 Astrowood Street, Pontiac. And I'm glad that we're making a decision about a youth center. My concern is, I have no idea what we want to put in that center. What do the children need? What the need assessment has indicated. Maybe this work has already been done, but if it's not shared with me or the other citizens, we don't know what that is. If we're going to build a center, we need to know what we need and what that's based on. And then, before we start, you know, count up the cost, how much will it cost wherever we decide to build it to give us what the needs assessment indicates we need for our children? For me, those are the two critical issues that have not been addressed, and I'm certain that they will be shortly, and I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Tamika Ramsey, 296 Second Street. I was a part of getting the youth millage passed. We worked really hard. And one of the things that the seniors like talked to us about was about making sure that the kids had the newest, the best. They are willing and continue to tax themselves to make sure that our children have the best. And I want to make sure that we're doing that. And I know that we may be knocking down the school in order to rebuild something, so what is the timeframe for that? What are, what's going to be in the building? What does that look like? I know that we have not had a community center for a very long time for our kids. My son goes, he is a part of the youth programming and goes to Shiloh Church and does things. I think that is amazing, because it also allows us to keep our kids in community and be around people and children that they can play with. In some of the cases, kids can walk and be safe, but I know that that's not the long-term plan. So I would really, really like to know, like, how long will it take to tear the building down and build something new? What's going to be in the building? Because I also would like to see our kids have somewhere to swim. It frustrates me to know, Ian, that our kids have to go to Waterford and Auburn Hills to get the best when our city should be offering it. They should understand that their home is the best and not going outside. And then we wonder why we keep losing families. So I just want to make sure that we have a timeframe, that we know what's happening inside of that building, but also acknowledging that this has been ongoing for a very long time. And what we have now is better than what has been happening in the past, because I have refused to let my son go to that, whatever it is, on Golf Drive with the health issues that were going on, with the lack of supervision. with the health issues that were going on, with the lack of supervision that was going on. Thank you.
Hi, I'm speaking as a residence. My name is Darlene Clark. I live at Nebraska Street, five zero six. Based on other communities and their rec centers, there's so many kids, so many things that the Pontiac kids are lacking. And the one thing that they're lacking in order to get the quality that they truly deserve is twos. Twos is that you have the money, you have three point two million, now get the twos. Twos such as a science center, such as a computer room, such as a tech room for future. Let our kids, let our kids, not just our black kids, but our kids of Pontiac, let them have the opportunity and the pride that other schools' kids have, other cities have. The technology that's in the school, our kids is so far behind. It's, I'm ashamed for them. I'm embarrassed for them. They not here by choice. They here because their parents have them here in the city. But we, the homeowners, pay taxes for these kids and vote on these villages so they can get quality. The past administration and this administration has to both look. Now, the past administration did their job. They set up a bank fund for money to be there for our kids. Why can't we build technology with the way it is today? Why can't they have what other kids have? Why can't they have opportunity? Why can't, why aren't they good enough to even be considered to have this type of opportunity? We as adults make our children the best that they can be. But without twos, they cannot be the best that they can be. And you have the funding to do it.
Are there any other requests to speak during this public hearing? Are there any other requests? Are there any other requests? Are there any other requests? Hearing no further. The public hearing is closed at six forty eight P M. I'd like to give the floor to Mayor Grimal before we move on to the next agenda items. That way he can help bring to light some of the questions, answers to those questions that were raised just now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify, when I spoke about the site selection, I was speaking solely about what location to use, not what to do with the location. We haven't yet made any final decisions about that. But the preliminary concept plans that we have requested and reviewed all contemplate new construction at the McCarroll site. So I do just want to be really clear about that. Now, again, we haven't made any final decisions. But in terms of maximizing site layout, in terms of making sure that our young people have the high quality facility they deserve, all of those concerns, all of those considerations point in the direction of new construction. So that's really what we've been contemplating. And even at Wisner, although the school building was recently renovated, even there, there would have needed to be new construction because there wasn't a gym there, there wasn't a pool there. And we are very interested in pursuing the possibility of constructing a pool. We don't have, as some people have already reflected during public comment, we don't have a single public pool in the City of Pontiac. The school district doesn't have a single working pool. Which to me is absolutely insane. And so it's a high priority for us to construct a public pool, assuming that we can afford it, assuming that it makes sense. But we're very, very interested in making that happen. And we're not going to embark on any design of the facility, much less construction of a facility, until we have an opportunity to hold visioning sessions, plural sessions with the community, to hear from the community exactly what the community is looking for in terms of amenities in a facility. But we also thought that those visioning sessions would be most constructive if we had a sense as to where the center would be located. And we believe that this property, between the size of the parcel itself, together with its close proximity to very large neighboring parks, gives us a lot of flexibility. So once we go through the due diligence period, maybe even while we're going through the due diligence period, we plan to begin those visioning sessions with the public so that we can hear directly from you, our residents, about what you're looking for in those facilities so that we can incorporate those amenities that our young people deserve.
Thank you. We are now at, and thank you very much for the community members that participated and provided your feedback in that public hearing. We weren't required to hold that since when it comes to our city's charter, we're required to hold public hearings when we are about to dispose of city property. We might be considering selling. But we thought it was a best practice, since it's a big deal, we want to make sure that you were able to offer your opinions as the process continues to take shape. And we look forward to, as the mayor shared, other opportunities, including you providing feedback on what shape we'd like that to take. We're now at Agenda Address. President Pro Tim Karrington, are there any, oh, I'm sorry. Recognition of Elected Officials. I see three elected officials with us this evening. The Pontiac Charter Revision has a few commissioners here with us. The Honorable Kermit Williams. Lee, is yielding the floor to the Honorable Chairwoman of the Pontiac Charter Revision Commission, the Honorable Tamika Ramsey. You have the floor.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to welcome everyone to the charter meeting that will be happening this Thursday, right here at six o'clock. Please come. Please come. Nobody is coming. And we would love to engage. One of the things that we will be doing this week is talking about the revisions that did not happen the last time we had a charter revision commission. We are very interested in hearing what people have to say about some of the major changes that were attempted to be made that time and to see if we should be moving any of these things over. We are aware that the charter is voted on. And if people don't understand what's in it and what has been changed, they're going to vote no. And we know that we do need to update this charter. There are a number of things that are vital and important for transparency in our city for this charter to be updated. And so we are hoping that individuals will come. Thank you.
The Honorable Kermit Williams of the Pontiac Charter Revision Commission.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Again, the charter meeting will be Thursday in this space at six P M. Six P M. We want to hear from the people. Another thing that we'll be doing as we go through the charter on Thursday will be actually flipping open some of the pages of the current charter and then discussing those for the audience. So people will actually know what's in the document of the city. So come on out Thursday at six o'clock. If you show up and you have something to say, we will make sure that we allow you to speak. So we will see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other current elected officials that wish to speak for elected, recognition of elected officials? All right, with that, we are at Agenda Address. President Pro Tim Karrington, are there any requests tonight?
Yes, President McGinnis. So basically, I'm going to start calling names, but it's a lot of individuals that didn't put down exactly what particular agenda item you wanted to address. So please inform me once you come to the podium. So I won't constantly have to ask over twenty people what they want to speak about. All right. Mr. Norman Elam.
Woodward overlay to the mayor, the council president, Pro Tim, to all the council members and to my councilperson, Melanie Rufford. We come here just to say thank you. Thank you for putting in place or voting on last week to allow the Woodward area to be involved in this new wave of excitement in Pontiac.
Mr. Elam, I don't want to cut you off.
Okay.
But I'm going to have to have you speak at public comment because basically the Woodward is not actually on the agenda tonight. I just want to be fair and impartial.
But I thank you anyway.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Christine Elam, is that the same item you want to speak about? We can put you at public comment. Public comment? Okay. Mr. Carlton Jones.
Yeah, I think, brother Elam, you may have been addressing Woodward overlay. But basically on the agenda, it is identified as number three. And that's the one I think you wanted to speak to was adult use of marijuana.
The Woodward overlay does not exist in the ordinance.
I was just.
Sir, sir, excuse me. I'm going to have an order. I put him on public comment, sir, so we, they can speak there.
But I think that's where he was, that's the item he was really speaking to.
I understood exactly what he was trying to do.
I'm speaking to that item, item three. Now, I'm not quite sure from what I heard from Councilperson Parker is if though the information just came out to the council on that item? Is that what I was hearing, that that information just got in council hands where you was probably wanting to take it off the agenda? That's, I mean, I'm just trying to get some clarity.
This is public comment, so it's the time for you to speak and we won't, we won't intend to.
If I was, I was hearing that because he was like, he was wanting to possibly say it and need to come off the agenda. So my concern is that we have to look at a couple of things. And I know this is a short period of time. We got to look at economic impact and what does the economic impact does for our city when this item like here. We voted collectively, whether you liked it or not, to approve marijuana to come in our city. And I think we need to try to move it forward. The second item is citizens' impact. Citizens have an impact in this area and we all need to be very conscious of what that impact is. So I want the council, I want all the bodies to know that economic impact and citizen impact is very important to that agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
One of the items has already been addressed by the mayor and everything, so I'm good with that. I just wanted to say on nineteen third Tuesdays, global music jam at the Platte February twenty first, March twenty first, April eighteenth, May sixteenth, twenty twenty three, at six P M held at Pontiac's little arts theater. I just want to thank everybody, by the way, for coming out on December thirtieth and supporting our, my band. We really had a beautiful time, those of you who attended. Also, I want to address very quickly the resolution authorizing the continuation of the flock safety camera systems trial period. I haven't been at council meetings for a while because of my work situation. But I'm assuming that there's already been some kind of report given to the council with regard to its efficacy. I'm not sure whether or not that this flock system thing has been, I guess has been already been used. And I guess the trial period has been going on. I'm not sure. Speaking totally, I might not know. But if it has been going on, how effective has it been? And if it hasn't gone on, which it looks like it says authorize the continuation. So that means it has been going on. I'd like to know, has it made a difference? Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Aaron Gayer. And what agenda item?
Folks, I'm here to talk about the marijuana ordinance. And by the way, I'm all for it. But this council is going way too fast. And because this council is going way too fast, this council is making mistakes. I'll give you the case in point. Last week, there was this rush to have the Woodward Gateway overlay sent to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, to adhere to this council's request, scheduled a special meeting. Well, as we find out in the package for tomorrow's Planning Commission agenda, there's not enough time to have public comment. You need fifteen days. You're rushing. You're making mistakes. You expected it to be adopted. You rushed. You made a mistake. Because of that, we increased the number of facilities from fifteen to eighteen. We increased the number of social equities to six. What are you going to get from the commission? You're going to get garbage. Because your Woodward overlay is not being considered because there was no public comment. And because of that, we're now putting eighteen into three districts. So what did you do? Take Caesar Chavez. That's where my client's plot is located. You now have eight locations, six retail plus two equity, plus you've got three coming from Waterford. So in a one point two mile radius, you have eleven locations. You're going too fast. You're making mistakes.
That does conclude your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael, is it Dow?
Dowdell.
What item, sir?
Number three. Good evening, Councilor, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. I'm Michael Dowdell, I'm the Vice President of Loom. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of a lot of the applicants for the licenses. Speaking about ourselves, we are the largest adult use retailer in the state and in the country. But one of the things that we do that's not talked about enough is that we create opportunities for the community. We've got thirty-three stores in the state of Michigan. And we've seen people start as a part timer and move on to store manager, district manager, and create long lasting careers for their family. So opening a retail store is not just a retail store. It can be a life changing career for a number of people and a number of families. We also participate in community development. And I haven't seen if that's in your ordinance, but I'd strongly encourage it. We have stores in Kalamazoo. And part of our programs involve employment and workforce development, scholarship opportunities, community service, as well as expungement programs. We've partnered with some of the larger organizations like Salvation Army, Forgotten Harvest, and Leader Dog for the Blind. And we endeavor to be a good corporate citizen. And we hope to be able to open within the City of Pontiac once the ordinances or voting happens. So just like to thank you for your time. And we also are partnering with the Elam family. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with them as well. They've been a great partner and they're a great asset to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kenny Anderson. I'll come back to him.
All right.
Ms. Denard. Mr. Anderson, what agenda item do you want to speak to, sir?
I'm not speaking to a specific agenda item. I'm speaking on a generalized agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to have to move you to public comment, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Joseph Alio.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. Joseph Alio, thirty-two, four one one. Agenda item three. Once again, you guys are moving fast, lightning speed. On one of the sections in the regulatory, you define store hours. What you don't define is outside the C two area. You define the store hours of outside the C two overlay, but you don't define where those apply to. Is that Caesar? Is that Walton? Is that a new overlay? Once again, we're moving too fast. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jan Zelensky. She's here? Okay.
Good afternoon. Item number three, Jen Zelensky with Common Citizen. Just calling to, or calling, just wanted to speak following the really excellent comments that some of our other marijuana businesses have provided here, as well as to reiterate the opportunity that the medical operators have also, through the last four years, stuck out with the, stuck it out with the City of Pontiac. And I would certainly encourage the council to consider the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow and the special notice that's required to be provided for fifteen days in order to allow for public comment on those changes to the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Hayes or Hines? Mr. Chuck Johnson, what item?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Chuck Johnson here. We all talked about McCarroll School. But let me say this to you, council. We don't need these outsiders to come in here and tell you and the citizens of Pontiac that you move too fast or you move too slow or you don't know what you're doing. We have these self-serving individuals who think that they can come into this city and do whatever they want. and do whatever they want, however they want to do it, and then blame you guys for not doing your jobs. I'm not buying that. They can go back and do that shit in their own town.
Order that's against-
Let me say one thing further.
Profanity is against council rules for future reference.
I want to say one thing fur- further. Anybody in this room has sat back and dreamed and thought about one day that they can get that big jackpot and live with whatever they can do with that. Norman Elym have sat back for years and set and waited for that jackpot to come. And one day soon it should be here. But he can't get it if these self-serving individuals keep coming here to this and try to change the minds of our government and try to say that his position on Woodward Avenue is not a valid spot. Ladies and gentlemen, do not let this opportunity for Norman Elym or any other minority businessperson in this city pass them by. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, sir. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Yes, I likewise also noticed the aberration of the special planning commission meeting, which does require, uh, time, uh, as, uh, some of people picked it up, but that is a part of our process. It's important for such an important issue that we do follow good process. It's important also that we be transparent, you know, uh, as we have been doing these, uh, in, uh, public meetings now, uh, as well as the fact that we've had, uh, some things that have been shortcomings in terms of the process and we don't want to set ourselves up for litigation. One of those things is that, um, in a, in a, uh, situation in which the scoring determines the applications, uh, the clerk told you a couple of weeks ago that we should have had a medical marijuana community benefits ordinance, uh, in order to have a quantitative and qualitative, not subjective measure of d- deciding on points for community benefits. That was also something that they has been missed. But in addition to the fact, we have someone from the, uh, mayor's own transition committee coming and talking about secret deals. That strikes to my heart here, what we should at least be transparent with the public about what that is. So she was a former president of the city council, so you would assume because she was an appointment to the, um, mayor's transition, uh, team that she would have, people think she has credibility. The last thing, uh, I would like to bring up is the fact that, um, your own council rules say that a person must vote yes or no on an issue unless they have a direct financial interest. That's the only reason to abstain. So the white elephant in the room, and I applaud her if she thinks this is her conscience, she shouldn't vote. But why is there a councilperson who can't vote, given that rule? And that's a pure B B issue that the council should answer for transparency.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller?
I just got a question for the body, because I was just, I, I know the answer, but I need to ask it for the public in here. Uh, there seem to be some conflict of interest with some people on boards, uh, speaking in regards to the marijuana. Uh, as stated, Ms. Rutherford have abstained herself. There's been brought to my attention, there's another member up there, you guys, that is, uh, with this marijuana going in the city and they have property that's going to be downtown. Number one, and my fr- my second question is, there's also the planning meeting tomorrow. There are some people that has been stated. Like I tell people the city of Pontiac, anybody in here to know, everybody know each other some kind of way. We can always go tell what's going on. So with that being said, one of these, two of these people are one on the planning and maybe the council can speak to it in their closing comments. Who's on the planning commission has a conflict of interest? Because there's been, I'm just gonna see if you know who it is, because I kind of do. And, uh, and why they can't vote. A lot of these people got, uh, kind of intertwined with these boards and what they're voting on. And like I stated, well, it's a council member that sits up there as well, has a conflict because he has a business downtown and marijuana. So you kind of have to abstain from voting as well. I just wanted to know, is that true? Is it possible? And i- is it, even mayor, I dare to use, Mr. Mayor, is that, is that true? And when I was on council, we couldn't be, we wasn't on the planning commission. And I don't know for sure, so I'm asking your advice or for an attorney and your attorney. Can one of the councilmember be on the planning commission legally? If so, fine. Because I'm, I didn't ask these questions, I just want to get it from you, so they can hear from you. Okay? Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Larry Jasper? What item are you speaking to, sir?
I just wanted to say, um, thank you to the mayor and the council for moving forward on this. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to review the information before I got here today because it wasn't available on the website. Um, obviously, there's some legal issues you need to go through. I was happy that you put the Woodward lay, layover in, but finding out that the planning commission hasn't had a chance to go over that, it's kind of hard to vote on something that you don't have the full information for. Additionally, um, you know, with the marijuana ordinance, you might want to incorporate something where the city is providing electricity for the marijuana licenses and they get paid for that, maybe water, sewage, data entry information, internet applications. This would bring in additional revenues to the city and actually be a way to provide citizens a benefit for the marijuana. Because not everybody smokes marijuana. And I know this is what we think is going to bring a ton of money in, but rushing through the process is not going to make it any better. We've already been here four years, why are we pushing it forward at that rate? What's the push? Who's pushing? If you've got people that haven't gotten through the process and, and, and the public hasn't been able to hear the information, you're not following procedure, you're not following the ordinance, you're not, you're, you're here voting on an ordinance that you want to put into law, but you're not even following the procedures to make it happen. So step back a minute, look at the information, provide it to the community, make sure you're doing the right things and look at all your options. You know, marijuana licenses, you talk about serving the community. Well, if they had to pay a certain amount of money for electricity that the city provided through a partnership or a certain amount of money for water or sewer, wow, that, that starts bringing in revenue streams. Maybe we can use that for our kids and the new buildings we're going to put down in the center of Pontiac. And on top of the center of Pontiac, where the building is, that's a dangerous location. So I s- so, I hope you're putting in safety for the children and just don't put them into the four corners of what we call Gang City. I know. My brother owns one of the apartment buildings there.
Thank you, sir, that concludes your time.
All right, thank you.
President McGinnis? That concludes, uh, pub, I mean, agenda address.
All right, so that concludes that item of the agenda. We are now at number three, adoption of city of Pontiac adult use marijuana business ordinance. This was postponed, um, from the most recent regular city council meeting. It had previously been moved and seconded, so we don't need to have a move and second. Um, but per Councilman Parker, um, he was interested in, um, considering it being, uh, postponed for one week to the January thirty-first meeting. Is that your motion, sir? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker and seconded by, uh, Councilman Goodman. Um, so the motion before us is on whether to postpone for one week. Any discussion?
I do.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
I was speaking of, if I recall, last week, we had asked that the planning commission take a look at the overlay, I believe, and give their opinion of it. In addition, uh, there was some issues that we was talking about being included in the ordinance that, um, the red i- red line item agenda did not get to us until about two o'clock this afternoon, that I personally have not had an opportunity to read through and I'd like an opportunity to read through it before I vote on it. And for that reason, I asked that we delay it.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for one week? Councilman Goodman.
So, to, to, to echo, uh, Councilman Parker's point, uh, n- n- not to rehash my vote from, uh, from last week, but I, I do think that there is definitely some merit in waiting until after we get, uh, some feedback from the planning commission since part of this ordinance that has to be done is relying on them. Especially because to, uh, a point mentioned earlier, we, uh, increase the number without having any, like, really, any real metric of what's going to happen with that overlay. And I'd like us to possibly wait until we get more information and they've done what we've asked them to do before moving forward with, with the ordinance. I mean, at that, at this point, we're, uh, at the tail end of it and we, we, we have done, I'd say, a, a majority of the work that needs to be done. We are really waiting on it, we, we are waiting on a thing to finish our job. So I, I think at this point, there, there is definitely some merit in waiting until that's completed.
Councilwoman James.
Uh, I would also like clarification.
Your microphone.
I would also like clarification on the, uh, question that came up about whether or not we have, uh, time to do a public comment. I'd like some clarification about that, if that is in fact an issue.
Sure, so to answer that question raised by the community and, and you've invoked, uh, the planning commission meets the first Wednesday of every month. So for this month, January, that was, I think, the fourth of January, but that first week in January, right after the New Year's holiday. A quorum of the, the planning commission was not able to attend. So that meeting, where there was a public hearing scheduled to consider the zoning amendments related to this, had to be, in effect, it was canceled due to the meeting not being able to be held due to lack of attendance. So following that, the planning division scheduled a special meeting for the planning commission to take place on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. Proper notice was given for that. The proper notice is for a zoning text amendment. And so what will come up in the planning commission tomorrow night might invoke a need to have an additional public hearing if there's enough interest in the planning commission to consider zoning map amendments as it relates to overlay districts. That's what legal counsel has shared with me in recent days. So it, there, tomorrow is a special meeting of the Pontiac Planning Commission. There is a properly scheduled with adequate fifteen-day notice public hearing, but it's a gu- around the, the zoning text amendment for essentially all the zoning implications with, with adult use marijuana. It's the third leg of the stool. We've had three legs here. We've already pending the enactment of these other two legs of the stool. We've lifted the prohibition, we did that last week at city council. So that ordinance change has happened. And this is the second leg of the stool, whether, you know, we adopt an ordinance for adult use marijuana. And the third leg of the stool is the zoning guts that make the changes happen. And that's where the distribution of number of retailers, the, the overlay districts and what have you, that's all sorted out in that. And so what we will find out tomorrow from the planning commission is if they have any interest, if they're ready to make a recommendation, if they want to have an additional public hearing that might focus on map amendment changes. Those are unknowns that we, we don't know yet. But to answer the question that was raised, the public hearing that is scheduled is taking place, contingent on there being a quorum of, of the planning commission that does attend. And based on the feedback I've heard, I anticipate they'll, that will take place. The community is invited, that starts at six P M and that's held here in these chambers. It's also televised and, and livestreamed, so you can follow along in any way, um, that you would like as well.
Thank you.
Um, and I want to just say for, in this discussion, to the point about, uh, rushing, this was first presented to the city council, this particular document, um, the initial proposal, the last meeting in November. Um, so there have been many weeks that have gone by. Obviously, it's continued to be honed and better perfected. Um, but this is, in our time in office, the most time that's been invested in an ordinance, um, with good reason. You know, there's a lot of layers to it, but I just want to make that be clear that there have been multiple readings, um, and multiple considerations as a result. So the motion before us is to postpone, uh, this ordinance reading for one week to the January thirty-first meeting. Um, there's been discussion, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I have no objection postponing it. And I would note that council could vote on the, uh, amendments that I think the attorney has suggested and still postpone final passage if that's the, the primary concern. I know there are some cleanup amendments that, uh, the city's attorney has proposed. I throw that out just as a possibility.
Yes, and, and what Councilman Parker has identified in part of the motivation of his motion is that those, uh, amendments, of which I see twelve in number, um, that council, at least some members of council would like more time to further review and consider it.
Oh, the amendments themselves?
The amendments themselves, yes. So the bulk of the ordinance, yes, has been very thoroughly seen, vetted, shared, um, and dissected, but we want to make sure that any additional changes, uh, are done with, with care. That's the motion that's before us. Hearing, no further discussion. Speakers list exhausted. Roll call on the motion to postpone for one week to the January thirty-first city council meeting. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Five yays, one nay, one extension.
That motion carries, it will be back before us at our next regular city council meeting. Next, is there a motion to adopt the resolution by city council calling for concentrated and coordinated state, county, and local mental health resources?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Parker. That motion is now before us and we give the floor to Councilman Rutherford to read, um, this resolution which she had, uh, requested. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Thank you. Whereas the Pontiac City Council has been considering conversations about the state of our state, nation, fractured and insufficient mental health system with strong concerns about our neighborhoods when they are struggling with mental health crisis. And whereas Pontiac residents and surrounding communities have been underserved by disinvestment and privatization of Michigan's mental health services in recent decades and persuasive barriers to finding information and services about the remaining patchwork of agencies and accessibility for their services continue. And whereas the city of Pontiac has been in recent months made a conservative, f- conservative push to make the existing policy, public and private resources and agencies working with a focus on addressing mental health. And in the past few months, it has been featured on the homepage of the city website. Now therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council hereby calls for more concentrated and coordinated state, county, and federal resources to better assist Pontiac residents contending with mental health challenges. And further resolve, the city of Pontiac is an eager partner for courageous conversations with the elected and appointed leaders, uh, in the state of Michigan government, the Michigan legislative, the Oakland County government, the surrounding municipalities, how we can address these challenges directly or proactively. And further resolve, the Pontiac, excuse me, the city council acknowledges the work effectively underway by the Oakland County Task Force on Poverty and Homelessness to inventory and assess the emergency resources available to the residents of Pontiac and Oakland County. And further resolve, the Pontiac City Council requests for the mayor and the administration to engage in Oakland County Task Force on Poverty and Homelessness on that initiative. And further resolve, the Pontiac City Council requests for the mayor and his administration to pursue further internal and external opportunities for expanding the com- the communication out of all currently available mental health resources available to its residents.
So that's the motion before us. Any discussion on the resolution before us? Councilman Rutherford.
I truly hope that this brings some, um, solidarity about this issue because the community is still waiting for a response from the administration. The community is still waiting for a response about what we're going to do and this is the first step headed in the right direction. So I applaud this council for putting this initiative together and this resolution. That's it.
And I want to, um, center what Councilman Nicholson shared, uh, I believe it was last week, in terms of the state policies and the state funding solutions that we intentionally have language in this resolution that speaks about how the disinvestment, the fracturing, the privatization that has happened in our state's mental health system has had destructive consequences, not just within the confines of the city of Pontiac, uh, but very much it's, there is, it's exacerbated in the city of Pontiac because in part, that's where they, uh, had a, an overpopulation of those services and residents in, in that need. We recognize that Pontiac has an acute issue when it comes to those suffering from mental illness in part because of the county and state facilities and, and practices where it leads to the concentration or relocation of those residents from other surrounding municipalities, especially throughout Oakland County. I, I don't think that we need to shy away from that and we don't want to undermine those, even if they are more recent residents. Um, but I think it leads the burden to us to take an even stronger stand to call for and marshal the resources. So I want to emphasize what Councilman Nicholson said last week on that front. Um, the, the buck can't be passed to say, oh, well, it's in the city of Pontiac, therefore it's the city's problem. No, this is society's issue. This is us as a people and a humanity about who we are and how we're going to tackle these matters head-on. We know that the city has been working in recent months to try and get the word out there about all the different agencies, but it really is a patchwork. And what the, the news and the community and those that have gone through the system have shared is that when they are suffering and they are in a crisis and they're trying to find help, they have to basically play whack-a-mole and they continually hit brick walls and they continually don't get the help that they need. And then we see disastrous and at times fatal consequences. There are stories that will never know their names and they will never make the newspapers, but they are just deserving, just as deserving of life, of humanity, of the resources- of the resources that are out there. There is funding, and there's resources, and there's systems out there. But in large part, it's making sure those with the greatest need, at their greatest hours of need, are able to be connected appropriately to that. Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, supports coordination and social workers that work for CMS and these organizations that are funded through Community Mental Health. Their caseloads are exploding. Where there used to be opportunities for these social workers to co-locate, even in municipal buildings, there's not the possibility. They have more upwards of 200 cases. So, the state has an unprecedented surplus. We should all be calling our state rep, our state senators. We have this opportunity now, with a democratically-led and majority-led legislature, to really tell them, we need more social workers. We need more case managers assigned to Community Mental Health, so they can get back into the community. So, they're not just bogged down, taking phone calls and issuing, you know, financial and utility assistance, which is, you know, really what they're stuck in their office doing is the very bare minimum, and these people are highly trained. And they're incredibly passionate, and they are still very responsive. The unfortunate part is, it is simply impossible with the resources and the continuous cuts that the state has dealt and blown to Community Mental Health.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
And I think one of the most important things to discuss is, and I say this as a person who has a shelter literally in my district, that I think there is an important part that we, not only as a council, I think, understand and the administration, but as a community, need to really internalize, is that we are not capable of doing a kick-the-can-down-the-road. This is not a different community's problem. I fully, firmly believe that if you live in the city, you deserve help. That is a baseline thing. So, I think that there is not only the aspect of us saying that there needs to be more help, but we actively also need to take the actions that look like that. And I really do mean, like, putting in the hard hours and work and phone calls and, you know, legislative pushes and all the work that we can do, because the people who, to Council President's point, are at their lowest, do need help. We can't just decide when we want to help people, or because they don't look nice in our community, we don't want them here, and we don't want to help, so we send them somewhere else. There has to be, again, real action to try and to make the change that has to happen. Because if we don't, then we will keep having the same situation. To Councilman Nicholson's point, for too long have we, you know, cut resources and made this work so much more difficult. The fact that, at this point in society, we just relegate people with mental illness to prisons and jails as a substitute for actual, like, mental health services. I mean, not to say that the state institutions were perfect. I mean, they were closed before I was even born. But the fact of, you know, going, the ballooning amount of people who are in jail solely because they have mental health issues and need help is absolutely ridiculous. And the fact that we keep continuing that system, and it happens here in the city of Pontiac. We watch it happen constantly. I mean, we, for example, the man who dances on Baldwin at 7-Eleven, the fact that he keeps ending up in jail, opposed to something actually substantive happening, is an example of the things that we're witnessing happen in our community. And unfortunately, we saw the absolute worst of it with this situation. So, I, you know, in a very long-winded way, I'm saying that, you know, not only should we do this, there's a lot more that has to be done. And I really encourage us to keep doing as much as we can to solve this issue.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Brother President. And I do certainly reemphasize what Councilman Nicholson and Councilman Goodman have said, that we need more resources to this issue. But I also recall sitting out there when the 10th Council was dealing with this issue as well, and the lack of support and the lack of resources that was available to be able to address the mental health issue. I recall them talking about the process of Governor Snyder even removing all the mental health issues. And so, at some point, we should, we're going to have to do something that people don't have to die to get a response. At some point, we have to recognize that the money is there. We just need to put it where it belongs, hire the people that is needed, and address the concerns, because the community is hurting. And as long as the community continues to hurt, we're always going to be having this discussion. Thank you.
Councilwoman James?
Yes, and I agree with everything that's been said. I want to say that I am very glad to see this resolution, because we do need to start this conversation. And it definitely will not end here, especially in light of the tragedy that we've all suffered in the last couple of weeks. And there has been conversation. We, a few of the city council met with sheriff's office. There are conversations. We, Angela Powell, our commissioners, the county commissioner, was a part of that meeting. And we were talking about doing some town halls to get, so that residents understand what resources are out there. Because the question was, you know, this young lady's family knew there was a problem. They were trying to reach out, trying to get help. But sometimes you just don't know what resources are out there. So, one of the things we need to do as a city is to really educate our residents to what is available now. I think we definitely, you know, with what everybody else has says, we need more resources. But we also need to educate our residents as to how to use those resources, how to access those resources. So, we need to do that by doing more town halls around mental health. And the other piece of this is that where you have mental health crises, which are different than someone needing someone to talk to. When a person is in a crisis, that has to be dealt with immediately. And so, those kinds of problems tend to end up in the police hands when really they are mental health issues. So, we as a city have to work with the sheriff's office. We've got to work with community health resources to try to put together a real response to a mental health crisis, like what was suffered the last couple of weeks. So, we do have a lot of work to do. And I think it's great for the council to create this resolution. But in my mind, it's not really all the council's problem or the administration's problem. It's all of our problems. We need the help of the community, because the community is going to have to understand and have a better understanding of what we can do to work in, you know, with these problems. So, again, I appreciate my colleagues and everything that has been said. And I look forward to working with all of you to get this resolved. I know Ms. Rutherford, Councilwoman Rutherford, has some great ideas of getting people in the community involved in this process. So, I think there's a lot that we can do to improve this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. I want to point out that part of it is calling for the Oakland County Task Force on Poverty and Homelessness. I spoke with their director this week, and they're doing essentially an assessment of, what are some emergency resources available? And so, I thank them for the work that they're doing. And the city of Pontiac will engage with them so that we share from our perspective what they know. Because just like those in dire need are finding, they are finding difficulty just giving a full sense of what's all out there. And so, we want to have that in one turnkey place for them, but also for our residents to be able to have. I want to acknowledge again that on the city's website right now, on the homepage, there are some mental health resources, a roster, provided by Oakland County Commissioner Angela Powell, that it's shared on the city's website for those that are interested in that information as well. So, we know what's available geographically near us in the Pontiac community. Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, one last thing I just want to, I want to say. You know, I think a lot of times people will say, there needs to be a place, there needs to be an organization that... And then somebody can answer that question by filling in that blank with 30 different organizations' names. And when they go out and seek these dollars, every one of these organizations ends up with a tiny little pot of money. And then we end up with 30 organizations that all do similar things, and then we have the issue of navigation. Then there are nonprofits that sprout up to do navigation. And then they don't do it well, because these pots of money, you have to keep constant contact. An example would be 211, where people constantly say they're called, they get, you know, sent to this resource, that resource says that program hasn't existed in two years. They get sent somewhere else. They say, no, you don't fit our requirements. And it just becomes this, you know, very chaotic issue. Of course, choice is nice, because if somebody's not comfortable for whatever reason, using one organization, choice is good. But I think we all need to be really careful of, you know, is there an organization that fits the needs that I could partner and provide my resources to and create a bigger effort or lend my voice and my support to, rather than us saying, we're all going to start 60,000 nonprofits that get $1 each, and then we can do almost nothing for anyone. And it's really about finding we have some amazing resources, amazing organizations, that are, some of those organizations posted on the city's website. And I encourage anybody who, you know, wants to get involved to please look at that list and make a call, because everybody's looking for volunteers.
Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. Speakers list concluded. Roll call on adoption of the resolution of the Pontiac City Council calling for concentrated and coordinated state, county, and local mental health resources. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the continuation of the Flock Safety Camera Systems trial period in Pontiac?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. And so, that's the resolution we're at now. Here it is. It reads, whereas the city of Pontiac, the Oakland County Sheriff and Flock Safety implemented a trial of the Flock Safety System in the city of Pontiac in mid-2022, and whereas the Flock Safety Systems have been placed in locations in the city right-of-way and have been actively utilized to assist law enforcement with public safety initiatives, including the successful apprehension of criminal suspects. And whereas the city council resolution authorizing the implementation of Flock Safety Camera System for the trial period for six months, called for the city council to consider the continuation of the trial period for the remaining months of that one-year trial period. Now therefore, the Pontiac City Council, therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council hereby authorizes the continuation of the Flock Safety System within the city of Pontiac right-of-way locations for the remaining months of the one-year trial period at no direct cost to Pontiac taxpayers. So, the question was raised earlier on the agenda address about the impact so far, the efficacy of the system. I see you have it handy, Pro Tem Carrington. Do you want to share with the community? Each month, the city council and the administration receives reports on the data, the data each month. So, Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Definitely, data is important any time the council chooses to make decisions. And when we first chose to allow this temporary running of Flock cameras, I believe each of us definitely had our own reservations about this particular system. So, I have a six-month, six-month stat sheet of what's been going on with the particular system. And as President McGinnis said earlier, each month, the council received a report based on that month's data. So, what I'm about to read off is some quantitative data concerning the total data for this period of time. The Flock system on stolen plates, it has 62 hits. The Flock system hit on stolen vehicles, 92 stolen vehicles. Arrests from the Flock hits, 22 arrests. The Flock hits on felony cases, using felony cases investigations, 23 incidents. Suspected identified using investigations, seven. And also, six missing persons were helped to find six missing persons with this particular system since we implemented the system. And that concludes the data, President McGinnis.
Thank you. So, the motion is before us in terms of the adoption of the resolution. Any other discussion? Hearing, no further discussions. Speakers list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
He had a restroom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll do it. Roll call. Councilwoman Rutherford, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Councilman Nicholson?
Yes.
Councilman Goodman?
No.
Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
McGinnis votes yes. So, thank you, Clerk Doyle. I've got it down, but it was six in favor, one opposed. Councilman Goodman voted no on the adoption of the resolution authorizing the continuation. But the other six votes were yes. So, that motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Did you get that, Clerk Doyle?
Yes, I did.
It felt good to be a clerk for a minute. All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the budget amendment to increase the budget appropriation for the purpose of completing the ASI road project?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So forth.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman. The motion is now before us. Mayor, anything before you hand it off?
Yeah, just very briefly. This relates to some road projects, some local road projects, and I'll allow Director Cooley to get into the details, that were scheduled and budgeted for last fiscal year, but were not completed. And as a result, we need to roll those funds over into the construction line item for this current fiscal year so that they can actually be completed. And with that, Mr. Cooley?
Yeah, I think the mayor kind of hit on all the points there. This is a contract that the previous council had approved. It was some work that was being done on some local and major roadways. There's still some finishing work that needs to be done on some local roads. And the money did not get rolled over from the 2122 budget into the 2223 budget. So, this is just coming out of the local roads' fund balance and being put back into road construction.
Any further, Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes. Thank you, President McGinnis. So, was it any reason why these projects couldn't get finished within that particular budget time?
It was, there was a couple of different things that happened during the construction season. There were some weather-related issues. There was also some sanitary and water main work that WRC had done that kind of delayed some of our processes for the roads. We got started on a couple of the roadways, and there were some findings of sewer system, sanitary sewer system issues that WRC needed to come in and make repairs on.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing, no further discussion. Again, this is essentially us updating the budgetary information. It doesn't change the project, except that it allows the project to be funded that was already approved. Is that a fair way to put it?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. Speakers list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the proposed budget amendment for this budget year to increase the budget appropriation in the GL account 203463974.074, road construction for the purpose of completing the ASI road project. Roll call, Clerk Doyle. Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
No.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis? Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and the budget is hereby amended. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the budget amendment for this fiscal year regarding public notices for $35,000 for $35,000 in Wade Trim professional services, $108,000, and to decrease the balance sheet account funds 101 and 249 by the same numbers respectively? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker. That motion is now before us. Mayor and administration, what are we dealing with?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll allow Director Lockren to get into the details. But this relates to a couple of items that were already before council for publishing of the notice that's required for budget amendments. These relate to needing additional funds to provide for notices, public notices, which means an advertising budget for the newspaper, as well as to cover the full amount of the bill for Wade Trim. We are no longer using Wade Trim, but that transition took a few months longer than we anticipated when this current fiscal year's budget was approved in June. And as a result, we need to move some money into the Wade Trim contract line item because that contract lasted a few months longer than we anticipated. All in all, I will note that I think the transition away from Wade Trim went remarkably smoothly considering that the city had been using them for over 10 years since emergency managers privatized the entirety of the building department. So the fact that we were able to bring those services back in-house after only a few months, I think actually is a big win for the city. But it did take a few months longer than we anticipated. Director Lockren?
I'm not sure that I have much more to add to what the mayor has provided. This was presented two weeks ago so that the budget amendment could be properly noticed. And as the mayor said, we need the additional $35,000 to get us through the rest of the year. The community development department has been very busy. And originally, only $6,000 was budgeted for public notices, which was far too little. So we do need the 35 extra. And when we move into the new budget season, we'll make sure that we budget appropriately. I wasn't here when the original budget was created. And then I think the mayor really covered everything with Wade Trim, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman James, then Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yeah. Is this going to be the last amendment for Wade Trim?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
This is the last, that we're going to see their names?
Right. There's no more billing coming in from Wade Trim.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Are you sure? Yep, I'm asking for a reason. But are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. I received an email from the manager that had it up. His name is Sean Kigo. He had it up the Pontiac account. And we clarified all of the final billing and we're all set.
Can you make sure you send that in future reference? Because I like to see stuff in plain, you know, in front of me because I'm a little confused about how this happens and how we keep having to do certain things for your department. So in the future, if you could be like more transparent with how you deliver things, when you deliver it and how we get it, I'd really appreciate it. And when I ask questions, could you answer them also? That's it.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing no further discussion. Speaker's list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the budget amendment. This is increasing the budget appropriation of the GL account 101721902005 by $35,000 and increasing the appropriation in 249371818001 by $108,000 and decreasing the balance sheet amounts of funds 101 and 249 by the same numbers respectively. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
No.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, one N.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted and the budget is hereby amended. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the city of Pontiac's submission to the grant application titled Pike Street Clinton River Trail Connector to the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability Equity Raise Grant Program? I move it.
So moved. Support.
I move it.
That's it, honey. That I'll do.
All right. So it's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Rutherford. Very excited about the prospect of the Pike Street improvements that would traverse our community and looking forward. Mayor and administration, give us the goods.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Normally, as you know, we typically, we only bring grants before city council to accept the grants after we've been given the grant and received the grant award. There are some circumstances, and this is not the first one that we've encountered together, but sometimes there are situations where in order to apply for the grant, the grant or requires that city council first approve of the application. And this is one of those occasions. So we certainly hope to get this grant. We have not yet been awarded this grant. It would be a huge win for us. And I'd like to invite Ms. Boring Gesser, Director Boring Gesser, to the podium to talk in a little greater detail about what this grant, if we do receive it, would accomplish. But this would be a really big deal for the community and it pertains to a project that we have had a number of public hearings on. But without further ado, take it away, Director.
Microphone for you?
I'm used to that one. Thank you, Mayor and Council. You've seen this project before many times and you've also seen this grant opportunity. This is the RAISE grant through the Department of Transportation at the federal level. This opportunity is meant to help communities rebuild infrastructure pertaining to transportation, and that means a lot of different things. This project is really to create a connector for the Clinton River Trail and to reconstruct Pike Street. It includes many amenities that I have spoken to council and the community about and community engagement sessions and subcommittee meetings to create walking and biking space alongside Pike Street and really bring a beautiful amenity to the city of Pontiac that we're all very excited about. This is our second swing at this grant opportunity. We did apply last year and were not awarded the grant, but we were awarded a project of merit, which is sort of like second place. And that's not good enough for us. So we're going to go again. And we've taken the feedback received from the Department of Transportation, which was minimal. And we've implemented and enacted all of those changes in our current application. We are coming to the table with some matching funds this time from a private funder at 20% of the total project cost. So we are certainly submitting a much stronger application and we're hoping for full funding this time around.
Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I'd definitely like to salute you as you continue and your department continues to look for ways to bring grant money into the city of Pontiac. And for the community's purposes, that anytime we can get federal grants or state grants or grants from foundations, that definitely releases funds on our general fund. So I'd definitely salute you and your department as you continue to make ways to fill these gaps in our city of a city that has limited resources. So thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Hello, Alex.
Hello.
To date, what is the amount that the grant department has gotten awarded for the city of Pontiac?
Well, that would depend if you're talking about true grants outside of entitlement grants. Excluding sub-reception agreements, it's around $7.5 million.
And so if we get approved for this particular grant, what is the timeline for this actual grant to be delivered? Because we have several grants that we're supposed to be using that we are not using as of yet. And so I want to know if we get awarded this grant, what is the timeline?
Sure. They haven't established a firm award date for this grant. Our engineers are working on updating the timeline from last time. Certainly a year has passed, so we'll have to update all of the construction timelines. This is set to be executed in 2024 as it stands now. But I'll provide you with that updated timeline once the engineers have it.
Thank you.
On behalf of the residents of the east side of Pontiac, we send vibes, positive well wishes, prayers, good juju that the Pike Street can be reconstructed, that there can be recreational enhancements in our east side neighborhoods, and it be done at the price tag of the federal government. That would be very transformational for our neighborhoods on the east side and also help provide connectivity for our outdoor recreation options for our neighborhoods. So.
Thank you.
So if anybody has a beeline to the president or the Department of the Transportation Secretary, now's the time to call in those positive messages. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the adoption of the resolution to approve the city of Pontiac's submission to the grant application titled Pike Street Clinton River Trail Connector to the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant Program. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We are now at public comment. Are there any requests, Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, President McGinnis. We've got several.
Do you want to start with the folks that?
Yep. Yep. I'm going to start with Mr. Norman Eglum.
I guess in earlier talking, you knew that, you all know that I don't know what I'm doing. Is that all right? Well, we just mainly want to thank all the council, the mayor, the president of the council for their support in allowing the Woodward overlay to be processed or in the move of being processed on last week. We thank you. And we see that you are men and women of your word to support Pontiac. So oftentimes, we run on helping and looking out for Pontiac. And the first thing they do is forget about you. But I'm just happy tonight that you all amended the overlay district to include the Woodward area. And we thank you and we support you. And we already know, or we believe, that the recommendation coming from planning would also include Pontiac. In Pontiac, we are Pontiac. We, when we wake up in the morning, we're in Pontiac. When we go to work, we're in Pontiac. And we don't have, we haven't purchased a building just to say we're Pontiac. We've been here. We've been here all our lives. And so many times, people purchase things to say, I have a business here, but really don't have us at heart, you know? But we have Pontiac at heart. And we want you all to honestly consider or push forward local participation in being a part of this great effort, new effort, new wave of excitement here in Pontiac. So continue to look out for Pontiac, and I commend you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Christine Eglum?
Good evening, Pontiac. Good evening, our mayor, Pontiac City Council. Everything we speak about this evening will solely be about Pontiac. We're not politicians. We're just regular people who happen to live solely in Pontiac. We, as citizens, invest our whole lives here. You, the Pontiac City Council, mayor, have given Pontiac citizens a golden opportunity to be part of this new wave of businesses coming to our city. And we do thank you for the opportunity. Our company is what you as Pontiac City Council wants. State of the art, brand-new building that is promised to enhance Woodward, not to take away the already beautification that the M1 concourse has brought to our city of Pontiac. And the opportunities are endless. Number one, pay of good job, pay it with good jobs. I guess you can tell I'm nervous. That's okay. Scholarships, monies, programs like Adopt Parks, mentorship, et cetera, just to name a few. Pontiac mayor and city council, who brought this opportunity to Pontiac citizens, we hope that you, we hope that you will be glad you did. We don't intend to disappoint you. We look for your continued support. After you have opened this up to us as citizens of Pontiac, please don't deny us. Please don't invite Pontiac a seat at the table and then don't serve us. Because Pontiac is watching. We love Pontiac. We all love Pontiac. We've been here all of our lives. Please take that in consideration. And we thank you for the opportunity that you have afforded us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny Anderson?
Good evening, and the struggle for black democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is Dr. King, blacks still second-class citizens. Last week, we celebrated the birthday, national holiday, of the great Martin Luther King Jr. From my perspective, as black folks, we not only celebrate the life of Dr. King, we measure our progress since his racist political assassination. Dr. King dedicated and sacrificed his life for black progress, leading the struggle for civil rights and voting rights. Through King's leadership, he witnessed the achievement of civil rights and voting rights legislation. However, he clearly understood that these rights were necessary but insufficient in making blacks first-class citizens. For King, what do civil rights and voter rights really mean when millions and millions of black folks were still socially economically second-class citizens? Regarding civil rights progress, Dr. King stated the following. The civil rights victories that have been achieved thus far is a degree of decency, not equality. Yes, King knew that civil rights gains did not translate into black overall equality with whites, that blacks still suffer from second-class racial disparities. Indeed, as black folks, we are still second-class citizens in America. In every socioeconomic measure in America, we are second-rate compared to whites. Black folks are second-rate, second-class citizens economically compared to whites. Currently, the average typical white family has roughly 10 times as much wealth than black families do. Black unemployment and poverty rate is twice as much as whites. Regarding second-class racial health disparities, blacks have chronic disease rates and deaths, including COVID-19, that are two to three times higher than that for whites. In the case of mental health, blacks are over 20% more likely to experience serious mental health problems than whites. Only one out of three blacks who need mental health care receive it. Recently, Pontiac has been in the spotlight of the black mental health crisis of two black women. One tragically freezing to death along with her children and another beaten and jailed and still languishing in jail by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department and the prosecutors. In closing, Dr. King said, we as a people would get to the promised land, to the mountaintop as first-class citizens, so he thought. But 55 years after his murder, we ain't nowhere near the mountaintop. The stone-cold truth for most blacks is we are stuck down as second-class citizens in the valley of racial oppression where blacks' lives still don't matter. We ain't free and the struggle continues.
Thank you, sir. Chris Crump and Valerie Bradley?
Good evening, mayor, council. We're here tonight to represent apartment complex availability. Club One Apartments that sit on the corner of Walton and Perry. I'll have our property manager, Mr. Crump, explain the availability that we have at this time.
Good evening, mayor, elected officials, and Pontiac residents. My name is Christopher Crump, and I have newly been onboarded as the property manager for Club One located at 1510 Nob Lane. And I come before you to pretty much express that we do have the availability for those that you may know that are looking for housing or that are in need of housing. Right now, we do have one- and two-bedrooms that are priced at $850 to $1,050. The qualifications for that is making three times the monthly rent. So for the one-bedroom, making at minimum $2,550. And two-bedroom, $3,150. Square footage is 720 square feet to 920 square feet. We do have immediate availability. And we're just coming before you to bring some information, to get the word out, and to share that we are open to housing those that are in need. to, um, housing those that are in need, um, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Carlton Jones.
You know it wouldn't be right if I didn't come with my workforce development hat on. Uh, I want to say that more than anything else, um, I think, uh, what, uh, Kenny was talking about a minute ago with, uh, Dr. King. He came to the realization, if we really want to make change, we got to talk about economic justice. And I think the mayor has spoke about that, especially us here. And I want everybody to know that we got to be able to understand how we actually get economic justice is through one of the key things, is education and workforce development. You put those things together, you can build your community properly. You get a return on your dollars when you got people like, I want to commend the council for approving ASI. They're part of TDC, they help train people right here in Pontiac. We've got to get more of our vendors who we issue dollars to, to invest in the education and the job training of our own citizens. So anytime when you got anybody coming to the table here, if you won't ask them, let me ask them. Are they willing to help train our people for opportunities for engagement into careers? That is so key to turn a city around. Now, I will say this, I reached out a couple of weeks ago and asked all the people on the dais to give me some names of individuals from your different districts. Some of the councils respond, some I haven't heard from. I'm not going to call anybody out tonight, but this is a whole total effort. I want to include folks from all around the city to say how we can have individuals to come and help get them trained for career opportunities. And I think we're on the right track when we take heed to people like, companies like ASI, who really will take it at heart to say, "Carlton, can you send me some students? We'll train them, put them to work, if they want to be working, we'll have them working." Those are the type of relationships we talking about, some of these folks who want to come in here with marijuana business. You guys may not understand what I was saying initially about the economic impact and the citizen impact. But there's two parts to that. They can come and do construction work and they hire people. Those are two parts of your whole economic analysis that you should be making for the city. And it will tell you about, those are double dollars that you can count for the impact that it has when you bring people in and they incorporate people working in your city. I want us to move closer in that direction, and I'm out trying to do everything I can to help. So right now, we're really looking at energy, we looking at environmental, we looking at construction, we looking at manufacturing, and also we looking at recycling. Those are four, five major industries we're looking at how we can incorporate workforce development. And I need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
Signed up earlier. Tonight, an uncomfortable subject, but indeed needed. I'm the first to behold police accountable for misconduct, and indeed, the recent incident on Pontiac South Side with the Reese was intolerable. Dogs are treated better than the sister and kids who froze to death. That said, a cursory study of Michigan history would reveal that also culpable in this, and no one talks about it, this whole matter of treatment of care of the mentally ill falls, the, the lack of treatment falls in the, solely in the lap of racist, elitist governor John Engler, who closed psychiatric facilities years ago, cut off state funding for the mentally ill, and cast them to the streets as homeless, and shifted the burden on an inefficient and ill-equipped law enforcement and penal system. Now, the quality of care has suffered greatly, with little to no state resources directed at developing real solid 24-hour community-based mental health facilities or fully-staffed facilities. It puts police in an untenable situ- situation which they nor the penal system is truly equipped for. When they come to a site, they come with bludgeons, guns, and handcuffs when things don't work out on a call. The low-hanging fruit in all of this is police in prisons. Stick them out there to deal with the mentally ill while the bureaucrats, who are the foundation with the lack of resources, hide comfortably in the shadows. The prisons are the new housing facility for the mentally ill. That said, again, there is no excuse for pummeling our, pummeling our women, our mentally ill, or not mentally ill for that matter, by police like dogs in the street. No excuse for 400 years of brutal, inhumane, and barbaric treatment at the hands of paddle rollers, slave patrols, bushwhackers, the Klan, and the police. Yet it is unquestionable that bureaucrats like Engler, who without compa- compassion threw human beings out on their gurneys to the streets, they should be held accountable as well.
Uh, thank you, sir. Mr. Michael, uh, Dowdell. Ms. Jan Jalinski, she's gone, okay. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Your agenda item number seven, uh, dealt with the budget amendment uh, that included, uh, a payment of $180,000 to Wade Trim, uh, which brought some questions to my mind. Um, and I see a couple other council persons also commented on that, so maybe they had questions as well. But I speak it in regards to the fact of what had been said previously. Uh, there was a lot of, um, well, the forensic audit, one of the main, out of the million dollars worth that they talked about. Uh, most of it, the grand portion of it was, you said that they concluded that Wade Trim had overbilled the city, insinuating that there was malfeasance and that, uh, they were crooks, you know? If you're insinuating somebody overbilled you and overcharged you, you're insinuating they were crooks. So, uh, but why would you still be dealing with people that you accused of being crooks? Uh, which is not, so that's the question I had. The other thing is that there was a lot of beating of the chest saying that, uh, "Well, we're going to get this money back that they overcharged us." So I'm wondering, was there any, ever any money gotten back? Or was this just facetious and it wasn't really, um, plausible to begin with? Um, because I still see it on the, on the agenda here that you've still been paying them. So something's not quite clear to me, it's not, you know, making sense. And, uh, I hope you can add some clarity to that.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Waterman. Ms. Charlene Dryer.
Hey, everybody, thank you for, um, letting me speak tonight. I am the new president of the Pontiac Creative Arts Center. Thank you. And, um, you probably know that, uh, our mission is to, um, educate outreach and, um, it's community outreach through exhibition, um, education, and outreach. I'm really proud to say that we've accomplished two of those three goals. I'm not very good at public speaking. Um, today was my third experimental animation class for the high school kids. They're having so much fun doing this. Um, and we have a really, really robust exhibition schedule this year. And I'm hoping to do more outreach, uh, like this. And I'd love to come to any of your council meetings, your, um, district meetings as well. So please reach out to me, you can reach me at office@poniacarts.com. And, uh, let me know when your district meetings are, and I would really love to come and talk on a more personal level about what we have going on at the art center this year. Thank you.
Would you like to announce the exhibit at the end of February?
Oh, yes. Um, for Black History Month, we have Bryant Tillman, who is a Kresge artist, um, fellow. And, um, he will be highlighting our first, and kicking off our first exhibit of the year. I have postcards here, and I would love to put a poster up somewhere here in the city hall. It is, um, thank you, Saturday, February 25th, from 6:00 to 12:00. We've ex- he, at the, uh, request of the artist, we have extended the exhibition hours. So, uh, keep your eye on social media so that you can hear more about the event. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
That's me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. My comments this cit- this evening would, uh, be about, I'm not upset with you, mayor, and I'm not upset with this council. But what I am upset about is the priorities that you use. I had to write this down, usually I talk from my heart, but I wrote this down tonight. Those of us who come to this meeting come with very serious concerns, concerns about how our dollars are being spent, resolutions that we would like to vote, uh, speak on before you vote on it, um, the problems in our city are some of the things that we discuss, and of course, our place on the agenda. Uh, we don't need to be last on the agenda any longer. Uh, some, somebody needs to look at that issue. Look at all the folks in here that want to speak, uh, didn't have an opportunity to speak and went home. Further, this marijuana issue, mayor, is not going to make downtown Pontiac be what everybody is hopeful that it would be. Marijuana downtown Pontiac is not the answer. I want to reflect back to your comment when you first came on, Mayor Grimal, where you indicated that you were going to lobby Oakland County to bring in some of their departments and locate them in the downtown area. That is what's going to make downtown Pontiac full and hopeful again. We need to look at those individuals who bought those rundown buildings, maybe give them some kind of an incentive to revamp, update them, and make these spaces available to those who may come from the county. Uh, there's several departments, water, uh, you name it, should come into the city of Pontiac downtown area. That way, we know we have someone close by. Um, I'm not going to say what I had to say, what's left. I'm going to let that alone. Thank you very much, Chuck Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller.
Order.
Okay. I'm going to say what I got to say. You know, I sit and I listen, and I've been coming down here over 26, I had to add it up one day, 26 some years, been coming down this city and being a city employee. So I hadn't seen everything. I hadn't seen a lot. But one thing I always stayed focused on was always Pontiac. Going to stay Pontiac, whether you like me, I'm going to tell it like it is. So when I rest my body, I say, "I did it the right way. I tried to treat everybody right, and I don't sugarcoat it." And truth is truth, and I'm not a butt kisser, that's never been me, but I'm going to tell you fact. And if I got to do that, to be your friend, I'm not your friend. You got the wrong girl. Now, with that being said, I'm going to say something. Pontiac rise, that came on my mind when I was sitting over there. You know, even though I was on that other side, when I was on that other side, I always was true to who I am. And some people call me councilperson, I'm still Gloria, for the ones that grew up with me. This is who I am, because, see, guess what, I'm on the other side back now. And I like it over here, because I've been on both sides. And I think what the people have come to in the city of Pontiac, at least I know they have, we get so many people go out and they get ready to run for election, and they make so many promises. I never did do that, I said I'm going to do the best I could and what I could. You come into our city, we get you elected, and then you forget us. And that's not speaking of just one elected official, one mayor, that's been several. You forget where you come from. We are Pontiac. And this marijuana issue I dealt with on the council for a number of years, should have been settled a long time ago, but the politics plays into it, I understand how it goes. But I'm going to tell you something. You, you guys put these dispensers in place, and I'm going to speak for me. And I'm just like this, I don't care if they white, they moms, Puerto Ricans, as long as they Pontiac. When I talk of Pontiac, I'm talking about everybody, because I got to love everybody, whether you like me or not. If you don't put none of these, you put these dispensers in the city of Pontiac, and none of the people that's based here, based here, worked here, lived all their life, all their life, and you put outside people here, I promise you, we not going to forget you. I promise you that, because we tired of this. Stop campaigning on what you going to do, then you get here, the very people that put you in office, you cut them. You cut them, throw them out. You think we gone? We're not. We're not. We watching everything you do, just like they watch me, we watching you. All we want to do, all I want to do for everybody up there to say, "Well done," when you get off there. I can say that when I left the council, I worked my butt off for my constituents, but I did it their way. I didn't do it of the people that wanted to run the politics of it. I don't kiss butt, only my citizens. And that's what's going on that I see right now, and I'm calling administration out what it is, the current one. I didn't say council right now, I'm saying administration. I'm calling out, I called the last one out, I was wrong, I was right. I'm calling this one out. Pay attention, pay attention, Pontiac.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Mayor, council. The other day, I was watching Forrest Gump with my daughter, and we started laughing about how Forrest always showed up everywhere that was very important for the United States of America. Most of you don't know that I've spent over a decade in the city of Pontiac, looking to redevelop this area, analyzing the, uh, master plan, the options that you had available, and tried to work with everybody in the process. Uh, with that said, I was part of the 425 agreement. I was over Bloomfield Township when I found out that Oakland County shut down Bloomfield, uh, Park, which has now been refurbished by the same investment group that's involved with the Ottawa Towers and Phoenix Center. Um, I was there on the site when the second Brownsville was put in. I was told by attorneys that I'd have to go to court if I wanted to see the legal documents. I was here when Waterman was in charge, and she basically did whatever she wanted to do behind closed doors. A lot of this has to do with what's going on right now. There's legal documents that the administration has to follow. But it doesn't take three hours for a closed-door session to read a memorandum of understanding. And you have to get past that. One of the things I talked about with the marijuana and the different things you need to do is the infrastructure development. Little city franchise is just that it can be used with any mixed development, mixed-use development, or any partnership that you have to engage in. So when you're in those closed-door sessions negotiating for the citizens of Pontiac, involve them, because the idea is equity ownership in the real estate. You could attach that to the new center for the children, you could attach that to the green, um, genera- uh, power generation and water purification systems, and the AI and digital systems. That's the new manufacturing base. If you want to change Pontiac, then you have to change the system to create the jobs necessary to make people wealthy. And what Carlton was talking about is the circulating currency. When you have people working here, getting paid while they're shopping at the local grocery store, they're going to the local gas station, they're going to, uh, any kind of education, uh, it could be music, whatever. Those dollars all being spent in the same places is what causes the economy to expand. That's why you have to have the central investment. And that's what I think that you should do with the marijuana licensing. Tie them into that so that you can actually benefit all the people. And if you tie it into the real estate that you're developing and the partnership that you have to work behind the closed doors, look, private investors want to see additional monies, I guarantee 10 revenue streams. Citizens need ownership and dividends so that they can see long-term longevity and investments in their own city and use of the property, so they take care of it, and so they benefit that by generating more revenue. And everyone wins this way, because those are all, can be given to their sons and daughters when they die. You're passing on wealth.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our, that concludes our public comment, uh, President McGinnis.
We're now at, uh, communications from the city council. Oakland County Health Division is selling radon testing kits at half-off since January is National Radon Action Month. For $5, residents can test their homes for the colorless, odorless, and tasteless gas, which is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the United States. The Health Division recommends testing homes for radon gas during the winter months, since windows and doors typically remain closed, allowing radon gas to collect inside and be more easily detected. The Health Division office in, in Pontiac, where the kits can be purchased, is located at 1200 North Telegraph Road, Building 34E in Pontiac. Residents who are behind in paying their water bills or facing a service shut-off can get help from a partnership between the Oakland County Water Resources Commission and OLSA. Those who qualify could get up to $1,500 in payments on their water bills and stop a shut-off plan. This program is temporary and expires on September 30th. Schedule an appointment with OLSA to sign up by calling 248-209-2600, or emailing info@olhsa.org. A new dining option has opened in downtown Pontiac. The Oak House Deli, Deli is now open in the Crow The Oak House Deli, Deli is now open in the Crowfoot located at one South Saginaw at the corner of Pike and Saginaw Streets. It is open Monday through Friday from eleven AM to three PM. Visit oakhousedeli.com or call two four eight, eight five nine, zero four four zero for more information. The next Pontiac Charter Revision Commission meeting is Thursday, January twenty-sixth, at six PM. It's open to the public and held here at Pontiac City, City Hall in the council chambers right here. Pontiac District One monthly meeting is January twenty-eighth at three o'clock PM, held at Alley Cat Cafe, thirty-one North Saginaw Street in downtown Pontiac. You can contact Councilman Melanie Rutherford for more information. State Senator Jeremy Moss has his in-district swearing-in event. It's free and open to all, January twenty-ninth from two to four PM. It's held at UAW Local six fifty-three, which is located at six seventy East Walton Boulevard in Pontiac. Accent Pontiac has their winter showcase February eighth at five thirty PM, held at the Flagstar Strand Theater at twelve North Saginaw in downtown Pontiac, free admission. Pontiac Public Library Black History Month Essay Contest is open now with the, uh, deadline for submission of February tenth. We have additional announcements, uh, on the agenda that you can see in the hard copies and also find online. Please contact, uh, Pontiac City Council offices or President McGinnis if you'd like to have your, uh, community's event included. Mayor Grimal, Mayor's Communications.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, the first item that I want to share, I mentioned, uh, at last week's council meeting as well, which is, we are undergoing an assessment and, uh, an endeavor to receive community feedback regarding improvements at Galloway Lake Park. Galloway Lake Park is one of our crown jewel parks, but it's been underutilized and under-invested in for many, many years. Uh, we do have a, a couple of ways that people can provide feedback. Uh, you, you can still share your thoughts on this via an online survey that can be found on the city's website. Uh, but also, we have an in-person opportunity to come out and let your voice be heard. And that's going to be February second, that's next week, February second, that's Thursday of next week, at five thirty PM, right here at City Hall. So we encourage folks to come out for that. Uh, and in addition, and returning to a tradition that the city, uh, had long had, but was interrupted nearly twenty years ago, we are getting back to city-sponsored, city-operated daddy and daughter dances. We're really excited about this. For some of those of you who have been around for a long time in the community, uh, you will remember when the city organized and ran these events, and we're doing that again. Uh, this year's event is going to be February eleventh from five to seven PM at the Lafayette Grand Ballroom. Uh, tickets can be, uh, uh, obtained by calling two four eight, seven five eight, three zero three nine. There is a fee to participate. It's thirty dollars for a couple, for residents, that is to say for the father and daughter together, it's thirty dollars combined for residents, and forty dollars for non-residents. Again, that's coming up February eleventh from five to seven PM at the Lafayette Grand Ballroom. You can get tickets by calling two four eight, seven five eight, three zero three nine.
All right, Mayor Grimal, your closing comments.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, a member of the public asked both council members, uh, as well as me about, uh, whether we have any conflicts of interest. And I certainly can't speak for council members, but I can say definitively that I do not have any financial interest in marijuana whatsoever and do not have a conflict of interest. I also want to respond to a member of the public who asked if we were pursuing any recovery of funds that were misspent under her administration. And, uh, I have and did direct our city attorneys to explore that. I directed them to explore that some time ago, uh, late last year. Uh, and I will follow up with them to see where that, uh, effort stands. But I do just want to reflect on the irony of a former mayor criticizing this administration for not being fast enough in pursuing the recovery of funds that were misspent under her administration. Uh, I thought I had heard it all, uh, up here at the dais, but this certainly, uh, is a new standard in irony, uh, coming from the previous mayor. And lastly, uh, I strongly agree with the comment that was made that one of the easiest, or easy would be overstating it, but certainly one of the quickest ways to inject new life into downtown is by having county employees relocate to downtown. That is something that I've had a number of conversations with county officials about. I talked with Jim Nash of the Water Resources Commission about it earlier this month, and I had a meeting with County Executive Dave Coulter where the primary subject was exactly that, relocating county employees to downtown Pontiac, and that occurred less than two weeks ago. So it's something that's still an active subject of conversation and discussion, and we're actively and vigorously pursuing that.
Council closing comments? Councilman, oh, I'm sorry, Clerk Doyle, any closing comments? Very good. Councilman Parker, District Five.
Thank you, Brother President. I just want to remind everybody in the, uh, District Five of our CDC meeting, January ninth at six PM, in the Lions Den in the City Hall. Uh, want to thank each and every one of our councilmen for the discussion concerning mental health and for, uh, their support in the delaying the vote on the, the, uh, the ordinance regarding med- uh, recreational marijuana. Just hoping again that as we continue to move forward in this season, that we will give some, some clear thought to talking about what our seniors need, the mental health issue, housing and the homeless. And with that, I'll say good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Capley James, District Four.
Yes, our District Four Community Council meeting will be held, uh, our first in-person meeting of this year will be this Thursday at six PM at the New Mount Mariah International Church. It's located on, uh, East Walton Boulevard, three one three East Walton Boulevard, right across from the, um, Dollar Tree Store. Uh, I, I invite all of you to come out, please, and help us to build community. Uh, we have invited our recreation, uh, manager, Tanisha Taylor, who's done a wonderful job creating, uh, activities for our children and for families throughout the city. Our Pontiac City Clerk, Mr. Garland Doyle, will also be with us to talk about, uh, the, uh, Walton Boulevard Overlay District, and there will be other guests as well, as long as, as, as well as food and, and not entertainment, but there will be a lot of information.
You are entertainment.
There'll be a lot of information to share. Uh, just, uh, as one other comment, I got a call today from a resident who needed transportation, eighty-five-year-old gentleman from District Four, and, uh, he wanted to try to get Smart, um, a, a ride from the Smart system. Um, I contacted or attempted to contact Smart. I think that was the first time that I have ever, you know, called to try to understand how you can access that system. And I have to say that I was greatly disappointed. Unfortunately, that system to us is totally useless for elderly people who don't have emails, don't have, are not, you know, savvy with computers, it's useless. Uh, so we, you know, I was thinking about the, the monies that the mayor talked about, the monies that, a small amount of money that we have, uh, to operate some kind of a transportation program, but, uh, we've got work to do with Smart. I mean, Pontiac has voted in this huge transportation, uh, millage, and I'm telling you, it needs to work for our elderly residents because everybody does not have access to internet. Everybody, you know, is not computer savvy on Facebook every day. And for these individuals, there are just simply no way for them to get transportation. So I just want to throw that out. Uh, I'm gonna be talking, uh, with the mayor and working on it because this new transportation millage has to do something for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, District One.
Who does the community department work for? That is a real question that I'm asking because of what happened today. So today, some of my constituents called me and asked me to ask a question, not talk about a vote, but ask for a question about an opinion, about a recommendation. Because although I abstain, as a councilwoman, I have a right to ask a question for the citizens to get a better understanding. And instead of the individual doing their job that we paid them over a hundred and six thousand dollars for, might got the number wrong, I know it's over a hundred thousand, I get an email saying that I did something that I know is a lie. I asked a question, and that's my right. And what I'm tired of is every time this particular individual is challenged or asked a question or, 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 or made to make, to do her job, it turns into a legal opinion. It's fascinating to me how you do it to no other councilpeople, but you continuously do it to me when the citizen asks me to ask you, not for myself, but the citizens who are going to be directly affected by decisions that you are making. And my question is very simple, who do you work for? Because I'm confused, because at the end of the day, we are here to do the job of the citizens, not Melanie Cherie Rutherford, not Tim Grimal, not Mike McGinnis, not Warren Carrington, but the citizens. So if a citizen who's in my district, who counts as fifteen percent of the voting bar in my district, asks me a question about what is going on, it is your job to answer the question, whether you put it in writing, or email, or whatever else. Because at the end of the day, that's what it was, that's first. So I'm done with that. Secondly, we have a District One meeting, January the twenty-eighth at three PM. Hope you're gonna join us because we want to know about the economic developments that are going on in District One. It's important because our citizens deserve to know. And last but certainly not least, February the nineteenth, we're having a mental health edition called Come On Sisters, located at One Saginaw, Michigan. At three to five, we're gonna have yoga, we're gonna have food, and a, a real conversation about mental health. I'm angry because it wasn't nothing, and you made it into something, and it's a constant pattern, and I'm getting real tired of it. I'm getting real tired. So if I do it as publicly, maybe you won't do it no more. Have a good evening.
Brett Nicholson, District Two.
I, I'm sorry, I, I can't, um, I, 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 I don't even know what to say. Um, I, I, I had something uplifting to say about my district meeting and how great it was, and, um, you know, I sat through a meeting where, um, people talked about conflicts of interest, um, that completely, you know, we had public members of the public who say, um, you know, there's people with conflict. First of all, I want to make sure, just in case it's me, because I think I'm the only person that has a, a business downtown, I do not own a building downtown. The only thing in Pontiac I own is my home. Uh, and I, I don't know what, how long it's gonna take for me to live here, for me to be counted as somebody who lives in Pontiac, because I've been here over ten years. But every time, I'm, I'm an outsider, I'm somebody who just showed up and ran for office, I don't, you know, the place I lived before here was my parents' house. I chose Pontiac as my home, okay? And this is where my stepdad is from, where he grew up, where he went to high school, with everybody else that comes up and says that I'm not supposed to be here. So, yeah, I'm here. I pay taxes, I have an address here. I do not own a building downtown. I don't. I own a, I own a business, I own Pontiac's longest-running business, I own the only business that's open downtown, other than the hospital seven days a week. So I, and I bought that building because of that, that, that business, not the building, I bought that business, and it does not make money. Every dollar that I get from that business goes right back into it, and I don't own that building. I, there's no equity there for me. I do this because I care about it, I do it because it needs to be there for people who are marginalized, who have nowhere else to go, where no one sees them, and they are unsafe otherwise. So shame on you for deciding that either I don't deserve to live here, I don't deserve to have a voice, or the people that I serve every day don't deserve to have. I have a full-time job. I have to have a full-time job. I, I have to have a full-time job, and yet I also own a business that's open more hours than, collectively, our employees are awake. You know, I mean, it, it's, it becomes very frustrating when you work so hard and you, you know, you, you, I sat down to do my update for my district meeting, and it was, it was unbelievable, the amount of things that have been accomplished. And I, I come into a, a room where, yeah, people are always going to be critical because they want things to happen, they want them to happen immediately, but we all know that's not the way that government works, it's not the way the charter allows us to have government work. There are processes and policies and procedures that we have to go through and hurts and, or heaps and hurdles and red tape, and it, it's, it's, it is unbelievable. Um, but we do it. We do it all, we go through the motions, we make it happen, and it was incredibly inspiring to get through that list and have everybody who came to that meeting with frustration in their heart, leave that meeting and get texts from people saying, please don't feel discouraged. You're doing an amazing job. This is great. And you know what? It, it did make me feel better, because then I come to meetings like this and, and, you know, it just puts me back in that seat. I'm gonna get my glory out of my district meeting, because I know that District Two is happy with the work that I'm doing. And, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close on that.
District Three, Michael Goodman.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, I'm doing my best to get better at not tapping the glass, right? Um, so that's why I speak to mainly a couple things. The first thing is, I know that we're having the discussion about, you know, council and the, and the marijuana ordinance, and I, I think that unfortunately, oftentimes in the city, there are a lot of these discussions that come down to, uh, the idea of who was born here and like who's, who's a native person to the city and people's claim on being able to do things. Um, and, and I think it's really difficult to, to hear in moments of disagreement that upon doing a thing in which we believe is for the best but contrary to what someone else may believe, that we are not doing things for the city. Um, let's just speak for my personal self. Uh, I have lived in the city my entire life. I was born in Pontiac General Hospital, February twenty-fifth, at six forty-five PM. Uh, I have spent my entire life, minus four months, living in the city. I lived on the, I've, I've lived on the east side more than I've lived anywhere else in the city. I lived in the riverside on Leonard, Leonard Lane, in the back, one oh one, for eighteen years. Um, I grew up in section eight housing, grew up on food stamps, like most people in the city. And everything that I have ever done has been because I truly do love the city. It has been the only place that I have truly ever known. Whether or not it needs to be fixed and make, make progress, it, it is a, a natural part of my existence. And so I say all of that to say, we're talking about, about redevelopment, I, I, I think the thing that has to happen is that we need to have a discussion to realize that not everything that is being done is to slight a person, but is being done, hopefully, at least in my opinion, and will always be my philosophy, is doing things with the city's best, uh, intention at heart. Because I have no family name, I have no wealth, I work a job just like mo- most people who are in this community. If I did not work, I would be starving. I would have no place to go. This, this job does not pay, does not pay us to sit up here and just to make, to have fun. I, I work a job like everyone else, I have credit card debt, just like everyone else. Uh, I have to have a car, a, a car loan, just like everyone else. And so it's really disheartening to hear that when we do things that we believe are in the best interests of the city, that we are somehow not, uh, justified to be in the conversation. Not that I'm here to justify votes, because that's not what I'm here to do. I think there's a very important thing that we have to realize, that what, when we're talking about the future of Pontiac, we have to recognize that the future exists beyond us. You know, this is not about very specific people. When, when I do things up here, it is with the foresight, uh, of being a person who came into the city to see what happened before me, who has worked in different capacities and what's gonna happen going forward. So when we do things, we don't always agree, but I do think that me and my colleagues often do things, at least again, in my specific case, with the city's best interest at heart, not, uh, the, the, the interest of GM in turning Woodward into, into Y-Track, uh, not the interest of the, uh, the marijuana, uh, the industry. As a person who, who uses myself, who smokes weed on a regular basis, as a twenty-one-year-old who's able to do so, um, I recognize the importance and the impact.
You're still twenty-one?
Well, I'm actually gonna be twenty-three now, almost.
Blurring the lines.
And to, the, there is nuance in everything that we do. There is deliberation and thought in everything that we do. And I, I truly do believe that it, it is just honestly outright disrespectful and, uh, I mean personally devastating to, uh, come to this council meeting, uh, as a person who, again, knows no other place, who has lived in the city my entire life, whose family moved here, uh, after moving from down south to the, to the region, to then move here and and work at Fisher Body and to work at, uh, Pontiac Truck and Bus. To, to have that life experience, to have that, that generational connection left for the city, to then come- to then come here and kind of get told that because I'm not doing a certain thing, that I'm not doing things with the city's best interest at heart, or that I'm not a native when I have, again, know nothing other than the city. And I think that it brings us to a larger conversation that, yes, we can have disagreements. Yes, we can disagree on policy and how the city is moving forward. But to say without evidence, to say without backing or without, you know, true and honest, like just gathering of information, to say that someone does or does not care is, the, honestly, at this point, I just say, it's audacity to make some of these comments that I hear about me and my colleagues. So with that, since I've been speaking for far too long anyway, I'll say goodnight to everyone.
Pro-Town William Carrington, District Six.
Well, basically, I don't know what to say now, but no. I just wanted to say to our citizens that every decision that is made, everyone is not going to agree with it. Every decision that each councilperson makes, some of the council is not going to agree with it. But that's okay. Because in the end, I believe that we have to come up with a good product regardless that serves the city and serves our citizens. So when I took office, when actually I ran, I ran on the point of trying to make, to do no damage, basically, when you sit in this seat. It means that we build on whatever the last council, last administration done right. We correct the things that was done wrong. And hopefully, this council and administrations can get that and get it right this time around. If not, then another councilman and another mayor will be here in these same seats trying to do the same thing. But what I'm saying is, is that we debate, we use facts, we use data to determine decisions. We remove our emotions from it. Because you cannot make decisions based on emotions, plain and simple. Because people will not follow your emotions, but will follow your data and facts when it comes to making decisions. So I hope my colleagues, there's been a lot said tonight on both sides, from the council, from the administration, from the audience. But in a sense, I know in theory that people want the best for this city. And I definitely pledge to that from my seat, that we're going to do some of the best. Mr. Johnson made a good observation concerning how can we redevelop downtown. We have a Democratic county control, we have a Democratic executive ahead of the county. He made a campaign promise to bring some of the things from the county back into the city of Detroit. That hasn't happened. I mean, that's the city of Detroit, but the city of Pontiac. That hasn't happened. Yes, that promise was made. Yes, it was made from Democrats. Yes, the Democrats have power. So basically, it's really no excuse for that not happening. So we need to continue to lobby for those campaign promises to be given to this community that was promised during public statements when the county officers was running for office. And in saying that, actually, I didn't get a chance to really speak on a lot of my year-end things due to me having COVID as well as having a surgery. So I just wanted to say that the department's done some beautiful things this year in the 6th District. So I just want to thank those departments for some of the blight of things that were successful. But I also want to say that so much that still has to be done. I'm still seeing things that was there 15 years ago when I moved to the city and still, every administration has not been able to take care of those situations. And that's those houses on University and the several houses on Perry Street that continue to be a plague to our community, that are owned by one person that owns these homes. One person owns the ones on University, and one person owns some on Perry. And we cannot continue to let these places sit the way they sit in the 6th District. I'm also seeing that the city is now being sued. I just found this out before I got to the meeting. Rubicon is suing the city concerning the Glenwood Project. That's a project that happened before this council and before this administration. I have no comment to the reporters on this decision because basically, this is something that happened before I got in, I came to this seat. But it's also been issues concerning that facility and the upkeep of that facility in our city as well, which they haven't adhered to making sure that that facility has been safe from dumping. And it has been a sore eye in our community. And I was really hoping that they was able to get that jump started, even though I was totally against it when it was brought to the district. But I definitely didn't want to see that project fail. Because they brought hope, a lot of community members rallied for that project, a lot of community organizations rallied for that project. So as a councilperson, I never want to see a project not get to the finish line in my district. But I do know something still has to be done regardless whether that site is in litigation. Rubicon still needs to honor that agreement of making sure they keep that site up to meet the standards in our community, make sure that it's not a bad eyesore in our community. And good night.
Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, District Seven. I was going to say, no comment, let's go. But you brought up something that's, I think, important since we're all here. If a reporter contacts you about something that's actively a lawsuit in this, somebody's suing the city of Pontiac, I would strongly request that your answer be, no comment. If you want to get fancier, you could do what I said, which was, "I refrain from commenting on active lawsuits or threats of lawsuits against the city of Pontiac," end quote. Because that reporter asked me that same question about that same lawsuit that I learned about this afternoon. So for the sake of protecting Pontiac taxpayers and your dollars, because adverse judgments against the city of Pontiac, we all pay for it. So I don't want to pop off in the news on any of those lawsuit topics. And I just request from council members that other issues are cool. Other topics can be fair game, but when it comes to lawsuits, please refrain from commenting so that way your words, even if meant with good intentions and even valid, honest opinions that would reflect where thousands of us feel, they will take those comments and it will be Exhibit A in a lawsuit to say, "See, this is why we're getting X treatment or this X outcome, and this comment that was publicly made in a meeting or to a reporter can be used against you." So that's just, I want to make that strong request when it comes to pending litigation. And with that, I'll say, I got nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, second to my Councilman Nicholson, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing, no discussion, roll call, and adjournment, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, nine nays.
That motion carries, we stand adjourned at 8:54 p.m. Thank you everyone for your time tonight.